1.34 of council's code of meeting practice. I would need to inform everyone who is attending this meeting that A, the meeting is being recorded, livestreamed and made publicly available on council's website and B, persons attending the meeting should refrain from making any defamatory statements. To start today's proceedings, I would like to welcome Father Paul Moncrief from All Saints Parish to read the acknowledgement of country and the affirmation and prayer for council, which will then be followed by the national anthem. Well, Paul, can I ask everyone to please stand?
Thank you for the invitation. Acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present. The Cabral Clan of the Durrug Nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Durro and Durrug Nations. Our affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Today, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by the council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. And our prayer before the Liverpool council meeting. The author of the biblical letter of St James writes, quote, "You must understand this, my friends, that everyone be quick to listen, slow to anger, for your anger does not produce God's righteousness." Almighty God, we gather in a spirit of gratitude for the many gifts in our city, especially our people. May our civic leaders gathered here recognise and encourage the great efforts of so many. May they work together to enable citizens to fulfil their aspirations, develop individual, family and group potentials and hence contribute to the building up of our communities and city. May they support those who are struggling or new to our area by lessening anxieties wherever possible and providing new or renewed opportunities. Notwithstanding their different perspectives, may they conduct council business in a spirit of mutual respect and shared commitment to the common good. May their service be humble, relevant, generous and honest. May they inspire unity in the diversity of interests in our city by the way they manage diversity amongst themselves. May they receive encouragement for their efforts and find creative balance between public service, professional demands and personal and family needs. May their efforts enable substantial benefits for Liverpool and the South West of Sydney. In God's spirit, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And thank you, um, thank you very much, Father Paul, for your kind words and well wishes to all of us and for taking the time to be here with us tonight. There are no councillors attending remotely and there are no apologies. The next item unfortunately is a condolence motion for Mr Ron Hughes. It is with a heavy heart that I acknowledge the passing of Ron Hughes on the 31st of December 2024. Ron was a dedicated and respected member of Liverpool's sporting community, serving on the Liverpool City Council Sports Committee for 26 years and contributing immensely to football in our region. Ron devoted over 27 years to Liverpool Rangers Football Club, holding roles such as publicity officer and club registrar. He also served on the SDSFA committee for 26 years and held key positions within Liverpool District Women's Soccer Committee and Liverpool Sports Committee. His efforts extend to Football New South Wales, where he served as delicate board member and secretary. Ron championed inclusivity in football, supporting participation from culturally diverse and disadvantaged backgrounds. He also captured countless junior games as an official photographer, generously sharing these moments with families. His contribution earned him life memberships with SDSFA and Liverpool Rangers, a state award from Football New South Wales and the prestigious George Churchward Medal in 2012. Ron Hughes will be remembered as a passionate advocate for football and a pillar of our community. On behalf of council, I extend our heartfelt condolences to the Hughes family. And I'd like to move that council acknowledged Ron Hughes outstanding contributions to sport in Liverpool, extend condolences to the Hughes family and explore appropriate, number three, explore appropriate ways to commemorate his legacy. Is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against a declared unanimous. And could I ask everyone to please stand for a minute silence? Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. The next item on the agenda is the confirmation of minutes of the ordinary meeting held on Tuesday, the 10th of December, which was also adjourned onto the Thursday, the 12th of December at the reconvene meeting. Move councillor Green, second to councillor McNaul. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Are there any declarations of interest? No declarations. We'll now move into the public forum of today's meeting and representations. In total, there are five speakers. There are two. The first one is regarding the 2025 Day Australia Day honours. It is with pride that I acknowledge Miss Pamela Anne Valentine of Liverpool, who has been awarded the Medal of the Order of Australia, OAM, in the Australia Day 2025 honours list for her outstanding service to the community, to our community. Miss Valentine has made invaluable contributions through her volunteer work with the City of Liverpool and District Historical Society and Liverpool Genealogial Society. Her dedication has helped preserve and promote our city's rich heritage, fostering a deeper understanding of Liverpool's history among residents and visitors alike. Beyond historical preservation, Miss Valentine has played a key role in community events, educational initiatives and collaborative projects, strengthening Liverpool's cultural fabric. Her generosity, leadership and tireless commitment to community service are an inspiration to all of us. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I extend our congratulations and deepest appreciation to Miss Valentine for her extraordinary contributions and well-deserved recognition. I move that council formally recognise and congratulate Miss Pamela Anne Valentine for her Australia Day 2025 honour and I formally move that council. I'll take you, I'll say approved by acclamation. If I can just, if you indulge me, if I can ask, Miss Valentine, just a brief presentation from us? Wonderful, thank you. We have, the other mayoral minute is regard, will be dealt with later on in closed session under section 1082A of the Law Government Act.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, I have an urgency motion.
Can we just have one more speaker, if I can, please? Yeah, no, it's, no, no, it's all right. The, um, excuse me for a moment, the next item is councillor Green.
If I may, please, I have a urgency motion.
What is your urgency motion councillor?
Yes, that council acknowledges the value of the SEA Games as a valuable event to connect the SEA community across Western Sydney and supports the request for sponsorship for the Australian SEA Games to the value of up to $30,000, including in-kind support to come from council's community grants and donations programme. Why it is a basis of emergency is that this event is only 72 days away. The event organisers are finalising the programme schedule for this event that is expected to attract over 3,000 participants and thirty thou, in excess of 30,000 spectators. The deadline for sponsorship of this event is imminent. If council is to defer this item, the window of support will eventually close. The event needs organisers to finalise all necessary arrangements, including supply agreements, printed promotional material. The sponsorship of this event would mean that council has afforded the opportunity to have its logos except and other acknowledgement placed on promotional material and have opportunities to speak about the Liverpool community at key events. If council waits for a report to be presented to the 26th of February meeting, it will miss the deadlines for inclusion in the marketing material and also will impact the ability of organisers to finalise the arrangements for the event. And I'll also say that one of those events will be held at the Ernest Smith Oval.
Thank you councillor Green. I'm happy to accept that as an urgency motion based upon the timing of the, um, timing of the event. Now, with regards to the motion itself, is there a second for the motion councillor Carnib?
Thank you. Can I speak for my motion and give you a bit more information?
I, yes, Paul means.
The SEA Games, though, will be held between the 18th and 20th of April 2025. The event will be held in South Western Sydney and it, and as I said, is expected to attract 3,000 participants and up to 30,000 non-playing spectators. The main venue for the SEA Games, it will be Crest Sporting Complex with one of the main sports, hockey being played at Ernest Smith Reserve. Liverpool will benefit from investment economically from this event. Importantly, council needs to establish itself and an identity with Western Sydney, that Western Sydney is capable of supporting regional level events. We need to demonstrate both a preparedness to invest in these events and a demonstrated ability to host them if we want to attract these large events in the future. To demonstrate the economic value, the Australian SEA Sports and Cultural Council reported an economic impact of more than $10.4 million for the SEA Games which was held in Adelaide in 2018. As a sponsor of the SEA, for the SEA Games Liverpool Council would be included in all promotional materials, including t-shirts, magazines, social media, Facebook, Instagram, as well as international media in both promoting and coverage of the events. So I asked my fellow colleague, councillor college, to support this important international event being held in South Western Sydney and most certainly the hockey, including the hockey at Ernest Smith. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any speakers, sorry councillor?
Oh no, I just wanted to speak for the motion as well, if that's okay. Thank you. And I thank councillor Green for bringing this motion to us. I just want to reiterate support for the motion. I think it's really important as South Western Sydney that we define ourselves as a region who are willing and able to host events such as this. You know, we have a huge SEA community across Sydney and New South Wales, but you know, we're talking about national and international visitors coming into our city, leading up to the opening of the airport, which will come in the next couple of years. So I think this is a really important opportunity. And I'm certain that our, our amazing staff will be all over it. But if we could, you know, I understand quite a bit of what's being held in Canterbury Bankstown. And if we could look at making sure that we promote this event, you know, with them into our communities as well, so that not only do we have the players and the, this, sorry, spectators that will come with the event, but all of our great community knows that these events are on locally as well and we can all attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for?
Uh, not, not for or against, um. Obviously, I'm just asking a logistical question. The amount, number two talks about 30,000 from the community grants. Looking at page 29, it's in negative. How are we going to make this work? Are we going to reduce the community sponsorship grants by the equivalent amount to get it down to zero? Because I'm not comfortable we're going into a negative figure.
Thank you. Through the chair councillor, just refer me to the page in the.
29.
I'll pass it over shortly to the director of community and lifestyle, but I would say that it is a cash and in-kind sponsorship, so the mix of which is relatively unknown, I guess, until we speak to the SEA community. But I'll speak to the, sorry, I refer to the director.
Thank you. Through the CEO, the money will come from the sports community component, not the community grants. We are looking at a cash contribution of about 8,000 and the rest will be in-kind from, um, support from the council staff.
Could we maybe just change the motion to make reference to that?
That's okay. So, so the motion should read, uh, to the value, include inside support estimated at a split of eight and 22. So eight of cash and 22 in kind and it's to come from the council's. Sorry? I'm just, yeah, thank you councillor. I'm just identifying the fact that it is a mix of cash and in kind and I'll, I'll leave that alone then.
I still think we need to put sports, saying that council's community grants, we need to change it because it's, it's in negative at the moment.
Through the CEO for the appropriateness of the, the grant, it's the sports, sports grants and contributions programme. That's the funding. So we've got that for the minutes.
Just out of curiosity, what's left in the kitty after this?
Through the chair, I understand there's 30,000 at the moment, so 8,000 taken off that would be 22,000.
And the community sponsorship, I think, should today's motion go through, not this one, but COM 01, I think it is. Sports or different, different, different? Where's the whole balance? Okay.
And just, just perhaps if we have estimated value split, just so we're not bound by those discrete numbers.
So councillor Green, just out of curiosity, when, when is the actual event? Do you know roughly?
Yes, um, between, uh, in April, from the 18th to the 20th of April.
Cool. Is there any further discussion? Nope. Okay. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Next item is Plan 01.
Mr Mayor?
Yes.
Could I request, could I request a change in the order of proceedings?
Yeah, what would you like to propose?
I would like to propose that we put questions with notice and notices of motions first. We've got people who want to see the outcome of that and push the rest of the agenda after that, if you're happy with that.
I'm happy with that. All right. Well, let's jump into page 142 in the, for those of you who have the purple booklet, the agenda. Uh, page 142, QWN 01. Edmondson Park and councillor Harley, happy with your? Deputy Mayor, sorry.
So that's fine. I'll answer the both. Uh, yes, I'm happy with those. I do have some questions. What I would, because this is a, this is a health and safety issue. Jardine Road is in a really, really bad state. I'm, I'm looking at the, the numbers here. I understand we've collected $127 million for that particular area. Uh, 98 million has been spent, so there's roughly another $30 million that's sitting there. And we need that road to be done, I think ASAP. So waiting for the $600,000 that's been allocated for the planning of that and so on. I think we need to move faster than that and get that road fixed. It's, it's a question of safety. You've got young children walking along that very narrow section of road and I don't think that's good. If something happens, we're liable. So could I suggest that we take this to the next governance meeting and then we discuss the issues there?
Cool. Yep.
Uh, in the meantime, I just was curious, um, in conversation with Deputy Mayor, mentioned in his visit out there was that the, the fencing that council has erected is, does, it does not allow any pedestrian access. That's why the children are walking on the road. So I'm wondering, is this that able to be reviewed and that fence actually moved back to make sure that at least in the, in the immediate term, that, uh, that could help alleviate the problem of children walking on the road?
Yeah, I'll refer that to the CEO.
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you councillor for the question. We'll review the, we'll review the fencing configuration as it relates to the requirement and as it relates to any safety impacts. And sorry, perhaps we'll report back to the governance meeting since it's going that way on that question as well.
Yep. Great. Okay. Next item is QWN 02, page 145. Uh, councillor Harrow, shopping trolleys?
Oh, here's the perpetual problem, eh?
I think you've been working on this since 2008.
2008, I remember. I got into council on this issue and unfortunately very little has happened other than legislation was changed. And I think, again, this, we need to go to the Governance Committee and, and, and get some more information. I, I would love to know why we have not fined anybody for leaving those trolleys in, in places that are dangerous. We've got compliance, uh, legislation now that we can enforce and I think we need to have a closer look at why that hasn't happened. I think that, uh, we have shopping trolleys abandoned in places where they're dangerous and it's up to obviously the contractors of those shopping trolley owners to get their contractors out there and pick them up. And the problem is they're not doing it. And we, I think we need to be a little bit tougher and give them some incentive so that they do in fact collect those shopping trolleys and, and reduce the danger. So that's something, again, I would like to go to the, uh, Governance Committee and then we, we have the experts who can give us the information.
For the sake of those who are here and who are watching, could I ask the CEO, would you mind just giving us a very simple explanation of how trolley collection happens or doesn't?
Yeah, through the chair. So fundamentally, the, the onus is on the supplier of the shopping trolley to collect their trolley. Um, in the, in the vicinity of where we're sitting now, I took a drive around and found 111 shopping trolleys. So my immediate reaction, of course, was to collect them all and have somebody pay to get them back. But the, unfortunately, the legislation is such where on each individual trolley, we would have to have an officer put a sticker warning the owner of that trolley that after, I think it's 11 days or some period like that, we would then recover the trolley if it was in situ at the same time and we would return it to the depot and I think the fine is circa $280 per trolley. I'm, I'm comforted in two things. Uh, the staff and council have shared the same concern, albeit back to 2008. Um, and on page 148 of your papers, you'll see that council enforcement officers have them. one hundred and forty eight of your papers, you'll see that council enforcement officers have themselves developed a response and what I will try and do is to update council and the community about how that response is working because the greatest metric that's important to council staff is the one cited by Deputy Mayor Harrow and that nobody's been fined. So I think we have to start using all our tools to make sure because they are certainly very prevalent in the CBD.
So, thank you, that, you mentioned that eleven days putting a sticker, is that a council policy or state legislation?
I just, I just refer to the Director of Planning and Compliance for a more concentrated effort.
Through the Acting CEO, I'd have to confirm the exact number of days, I don't know about that off the top of my head. But it is under the new legislation, under the P sub that council, Deputy Mayor quoted. So the objective is that council is to place a warning on an item of property that shouldn't be there and that's, that includes, you know, trucks in unauthorized spots and whatnot. And there's a period of time that we issue that warning for. I, I will come back to you with the exact number of days and only then can you remove the property from the public space.
Thank you, CEO, that was very useful. Can I just get some clarification? When does a trolley become rubbish? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, but if there's rubbish, then we have, we, we can move it and if anything, we actually have an obligation to move rubbish, especially if it's blocking a footpath?
I'm reluctant to cite the Oxford Dictionary description of what is rubbish and what is not rubbish. Only to the extent that if there was a item, any item, including these items, that was in a position of a safety concern, then it would be incumbent on my staff to remove that item, to remove the safety hazard. The, this similar scenario has now been seen with e-bikes and scooters, same kind of problem. But that's not something we have to deal with at the moment, so we'll focus on this new approach and we'll report back to the governance meeting.
Thank you, thank you for that, but yeah, I think it's, it would definitely be good to, to look into because I don't, I don't think it's, I think it's ludicrous that we have, if someone, if there's a trolley blocking a footpath, which means someone can't walk through, mother in a pram, whatever it may, anyone, that we can't do anything about it. The second thing, I, I think it's worth noting, just general for councillors, you know, we, we, we talk about modal shifts and we want people to use public transport, especially in the CBD. And I remember when we looked many, many years ago at our own, our ownership of vehicles in the CBD and it's actually quite low. So you have a lot of people who do walk up and down, who catch public transport. If you can imagine if you lived in a unit in Liverpool and you want to do your shopping at Woolies or Coles, what do you do? Either carrying bags a long way or you're really going to take the trolley and get us, I think it's, it's almost like a part of life and all, people say you can use a little small individual trolleys, whatever they call, I forget the name of those. You know which ones, you know which ones, all right, so they, the, but ultimately it's still not even enough. So it just makes you wonder about, you know, if you're going to have a, a place with, a, a city where not many people have cars and want to do the shopping, well, they are going to take the trolleys, I guess, how do we pick them up and so on and so forth. And I think I saw my diary today anyway, I've got a meeting with Woolworths about something, but maybe I'll bring that up at that point in time, because going back to one of your initial crusades, Deputy Mayor, that we did end up speaking to them. And we, and they did lift their effort, we definitely need to do that again. We've talked numerous times about getting to do what Aldi does, that can only be conditioned as a, that can only be done as a condition of consent. But then once again, you're still safe face with this issue. Hopefully, Council, Deputy Mayor, before your time finishes up at council, that we can finally have this one solved. With Council Green?
To add to that, in terms of, you know, low vehicle and high rise, I mean, I'm going to show my age here. I can remember a time when people could go do their shopping and, you know, their bag would be packed and it could be put in the trolley for the home delivery, fifty cents a bag. And now when you have, have home delivery, it's, it gets, the cost is exorbitant. So maybe in those conversations with our supermarkets, our big supermarkets like Coles or Woolworths, our corporate spot, in our corporates that, you know, having to prepare for the changing context of how people live, how people shop. Thirteen dollars and, and more for home delivery is a lot of, is a lot of impost on families, particularly in these cost of living times, so, yeah.
Thank you, Council Green, just wondering, you know. So the mattress shooter could shoot, could they shed trolleys? Yeah, so, yeah, see, I think your Director has.
Through the Acting CEO, the legislation defines public property as an animal or item. But a class two item specifically is, a shopping trolley falls under the category of a class two item, which is defined as capable of ownership except a living creature and made available for the use of the public at large, whether or not on payment of a fee or other benefit, including as part of a sharing service.
So in layman's terms?
It's probably difficult to define as rubbish unless it was probably unusable as a trolley.
Fair enough, thank you. Extremely useful. All right, we'll, we'll look forward to that discussion. Okay, NOM zero one, page one hundred and fifty, commemorative plaque for Enes Baslajic.
Yeah, I'd just like to move it, it's quite a few NOMs there, so I don't want to delay this one in debate.
Seconded, councillor Conneave, councillor Hart?
I just have a question, when is this event going to be?
As far as I know, this month.
Specific date?
I don't have the specific date.
Has it been booked in with CPAC?
I believe it has.
Can we get confirmation on that?
I will refer to the Director of Community, who has the date no doubt available.
Thank you, through the Acting CEO, the venue was approached for venue hire of the theatre for the twenty third of February, but it was a tentative booking, they haven't confirmed it, they're still working on their first venue and filling the first venue. So we haven't got a confirmation whether it's going ahead, but it is tentatively booked for the twenty third of February.
Thank you.
Councillor McNaul?
Mister Mayor, I have an amendment to the motion that I'd like to propose. It's a change to point two, where I would like to have it amended to suggest, to state, and, and I'm good with the rest of it, just that based on the report from staff, and I'll read directly from that final paragraph of the report and replace point two with a plaque for Mister Baslajic will be prepared and for presentation by the mayor or a delegate as per the civic events and ceremonial functions policy.
Great. Yep, do you have a second for that amendment? Seconding councillor Hart. I also should point out that under the Act that I, which doesn't state in here, but the, the civic and ceremonial responsibilities does lie with the, with the mayor.
I'm happy with the mayor to turn up with me, not a problem, he can even sit next to me, it'd be nice, wouldn't it?
More than happy to, but ultimately, yeah, I don't even know if I'm available on that night, but ultimately just the, the council can't override the Act.
I move to my original motion.
Yeah, cool, okay. Just moving forward, just, sorry, can we just go back up, just on the, before that? So your point two basically says confirms that your attendance will be there. Yeah.
Can we perhaps maybe add to councillor Ostevsky's motion, the point that councillor McNaul made for point two? Because I don't think they would conflict. And for inclusivity matters, I think it would be good if we get, if we're all informed of the event and confirm our availability, because I think, I think that would be of interest to all of us.
By all means, if you, if you remember when the singer was here, everyone was invited, but unfortunately not everyone could attend because of the conference. By all means, everyone's welcome to come along, although it's going to be in the language of Bosnian, so I'm not too sure if you guys will understand it, but come along.
It'll be great for you to translate then, is there, is there similar language to Macedonia?
Very similar, if you sit on the other side of me, it'd be really nice, we've got the mayor on this side and you on the other, we'll have a great night.
So then are, then are you happy to accept councillor McNaul's as a point four to your motion? Councillor Ostevsky, as recommended by councillor Hart?
Well, if the mayor is really keen to present the plaque, I'm happy for you to do it. But if you're not there and I'm there, then makes sense that I do it.
Yeah, I think it's, it's more much making sure that the, that the motions are in line with the, the acting council's policies, I think that's all the objective is.
I believe it's in, in line with the motion, if you can't attend, then I'm happy to present the plaque.
Yeah, but even yours, sorry, your motion doesn't even say that you want to present the plaque, it says you're.
I can amend my motion to include that, we're happy to debate this, not a problem.
Yeah.
So if we can change that, the mayor can present the plaque and if he's unavailable, then I'll present the plaque.
There's a kind of, there's a policy around that, that's already in place, so we don't have to, there's no point in having a policy if you're not change it, you know, on the.
Well, let's ask the legal counsel.
Councillor, I'm the Chair of the meeting and you can have a read of the, if you want to bring out the policy, you're happy to bring out the policy. If you want to bring out the Act, bring out the Act, councillor, it's pretty crystal clear in there.
I disagree with your ruling, so ultimately, I've been quite fair to you and I've said if you can't attend, then I'll present the, I've already made contact with the group, they know me quite well, I'm happy for you to present it, not a problem. But if you recall the last time, I found it quite astounding that all the councillors were left off the plaque and your name was put on there. Which.
You find last time, sorry?
They will call me Ned Manu because I presented the plaque, which was quite unusual. So to prevent that occurring next time, every councillor should be put on every plaque going forward, not just yourself.
Which last time are you referring to, councillor Ostevsky?
Enes Begovic, when he came out to.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, that might form part of a broader conversation about the civic events and ceremonial functions policy. So if perhaps we can weave that into there to maybe workshop that at a governance committee meeting?
Yeah, if councillors want to go through understanding the, the civic role of the councillors and the mayor, I'm sure that can be, if they want to be done. But ultimately, the, the, the protocol, the protocol councillor Ostevsky, if you want to have a read of the, the policy, if the mayor is unavailable, then it immediately falls to the deputy mayor. And if the deputy's not, not available, then another councillor does it, that is the usual.
I'm happy with that, if the deputy mayor can't attend, then I'm the only councillor that attends and I'll present the plaque.
Correct, that's the, that's exactly how the policy works, which is why we have, we have it there. So therefore, going back to councillor Hart's suggestion, are you happy to accept councillor McNaul's point as part of point four of your motion?
Can I just?
Yeah, sorry?
No, the only thing I was going to suggest was, I, I think it's accepted that at every event, if there's a civic event, your role as obviously as the mayor would present any form of award, kind of like this evening. I don't think it needs to be put in the motion, I think it's assumed that if you're in attendance, of course, that's what will occur. If you're not in attendance, then you'll delegate it to the deputy mayor and I think in fairness to councillor Ostevsky, if neither of you attend, considering his close affiliation with the Bosnians, I think it would be appropriate that it be him. I don't think it needs to be fine tuned in the form of four, I think the way councillor Ostevsky raises it, all it does is confirm his attendance at the performance, it doesn't necessarily override your role as presenting the award, I think the way it is, it is, it just requires a bit of pragmatism on everyone's part to go through that process and if that's the way it falls, that's the way it falls.
Yes, indeed, wholeheartedly agree, councillor Hart?
In that case, can we, as I said, amend point two to confirm the attendance of all councillors?
Can I, while we're nitpicking, can I suggest, exactly, thank you, if we could suggest that all councillors are invited? Because if we confirm the attendance and one of us can't go, we'll be in breach of a NOM that we've passed.
Yes, I was just about to. Councillor McNaul took the words.
I thought you'd be the first, the second person there, sorry, I thought you'd be the second person there.
No, I just thought that councillor McNaul took the words out of my mouth, I was thinking if we don't attend this event, then we'd be in breach of the NOM, so I just, I think it's, I think it's assumed that with the councillor event, we all get invited and if that wants to be included, I'm not anti that.
All right, so is everyone happy then with? So what's now written there? That one, two, three, four is the motion and there's only one motion? Sorry? That's all, it's, it's fine.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Sorry. Could I suggest we take two out altogether? Reason being, when we go to a function and the mayor turns up, I know occasionally you forget to mention me, but most of the time you do. And so any councillors that are there, you are automatically going to acknowledge them, that's common courtesy. I don't believe you really need to put it into a motion.
Yes, it's up to the mover and seconder, I, I share your exact sentiments.
I love the fact that we're debating over a thirty dollar issue. I love to see us debating some of these financial issues with the same passion.
Yep, so Deputy Mayor has made a suggestion to remove point two. Councillor Ostevsky, are you hap, as the move of the motion, are you happy to remove point two?
It's a thirty dollar motion, let's move it and move on to some bigger things that are coming up.
Yes. Great, all right, so there's no more amendments, if everyone is happy that we have one motion now, then go forward. Pardon? That would be useful, thank you. The amendment's withdrawn, if there's no further discussion, would you like to write a reply councillor Ostevsky? No, no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, I declare it unanimous. Okay. Okay, next item is NOM zero two, page one hundred and fifty two. The importance of flying the Australian flag on our council buildings.
I move the motion that way.
Tab fourteen, recommendation on page one fifty three. Moved councillor Ostevsky, do you have a seconder, seconded Deputy Mayor? Is there any discussion? Councillor Ostevsky?
So before we get into a debate, and firstly, thank you to BJ for speaking so passionately about this topic and I heard BJ on the radio last week speaking about it and he got quite emotional, so thank you for turning up and alleviating to all of us how important this is. This motion is basically calling for a report at the moment, so it's in its current state, there are no financial implications as per the CEO's comments. The motion is asking to determine what will be the cost and if there are any cost offsets available through the federal government grants. Now, I think when it comes to the Australian flag, we should give it all the respect that it deserves and allow this motion to proceed to the next stage.
Councillor Conneave?
Yes, if it's, look, first, I'd like to thank BJ for his commentary earlier. I think it's, of course, it's, you know, super important as citizens and as councillors to set an exemplary standard of, you know, what Australia means to all of us. And I think my particular point of view about this, this motion is that it should incorporate, and there's a Acting Chief Executive Officer's comments about there are, there being three official flags, being the Aboriginal flag and the Torres Strait Islander flag. Now, I think at a preliminary stage being, it being a costing exercise, I think it would be great for council to be able to afford and fund the flying of those three flags, the official flags, for example, here at, you know, the new council building. Of course, I think it's prudent to go out and see what the cost of that will be, where it would be, the safety measures around it, the cost associated with it, with it, you know, the rising and of those flags, so from a cost standpoint, if the mover and.
Um, so from a cost standpoint, if the mover and seconder are content with, um, something of that substance being incorporated, that it be. Uh, the three official flags. Um, and I'm content with two about the funding of the initiative. Um, and three being that, uh, the acting CEO come back with a report, um, about, uh, the funding source. Um, and come back to the next council meeting, um, on top of the new library, Scott Street, or or any other civic. Or any other civic building that council may own, that council staff think it's an appropriate consideration for us to consider. For example, maybe X amount of dollars, which would be super expensive for council building, but it may be. Um, I don't know, two other sites that council may own, it might be considerably cheaper. And as a result, we may want to consider putting it there as well. Um, I just think from a costing standpoint, um, it would be good to go out and get the costings of three official flags. That's my idea. If the mover and seconder are content with that.
Just before I move to councillor Hart and then councillor AJ, um, on Australia, uh, in, we were presented a flag by, uh. Miss Dailly, the member for Fowler, a flag that has been flown inside Parliament House in Canberra. Uh, and which is very special. She presented it to everyone at the citizenship ceremony, the full house. Uh, and we're currently looking for a location to put the flag in the, in the, out, around this building somewhere. Uh, being such a significant, uh, significant gift. So that that is happening, um, uh, as 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 we look along. Um, but yes, I just thought pointed out, councillor Hart?
I just wanted to, uh, bring up an issue with what I think is the the order of this motion. Um, point one says resolves to fly the Australian flag on all council buildings. We're not at that stage yet. We, I think point three realistically should move up and then that should be. Uh, potentially a resolution of council once that report comes back to us. Um, I also want to know, when we say all council buildings, uh. Does that include toilet blocks? Like, where where does it stop? I I think we need council staff to come back to us and, um, report on what buildings they deem appropriate. And obviously, that'd be the vast majority of buildings in in the LGA. And I think there needs to be consideration to the costing of doing this, obviously, and that will be in the report. Um, but there there are also considerations when it comes to respecting the flag itself. Uh, including, uh, from what I can think of the top of my head, for example, it has to be, um, the flag has to be taken down. Uh, uh, at the end of the day, or it has to be illuminated properly, and that would come at a significant cost. I think we need, uh, a lot more, and I hope this report would do that, but a lot more consideration into that. Um, so if we can perhaps, i- if the move is amenable, um, work towards changing the wording of this motion to. And I want to reiterate that the the spirit of this motion should stay the same, but, um, just try and make it a bit more orderly.
Sorry, that was my fault.
A bit more orderly to ensure, um, you know, it's it's a quality motion.
I probably should have called a point of order there before when you said, will we fly the Australian flag on a toilet? I mean, that's very disrespectful.
I'm saying it's a council building.
Very disrespectful.
Uh, you're misconstruing my words now councillor Rusevsky.
Excuse me councillors, uh, councillor Hart did not indicate any disrespect. He was just seeking clarification. So let's not bring this up as a, uh, who is more Australian than the other.
You're not doing that.
No, no, sorry councillor, all the respect, your your motion as worded councillor is terrible drafting. It contradicts itself.
So is yours.
Thank councillor, sorry, which one? Sorry, sorry, excuse me councillor, the wording of your motion is terribly drafted.
I disagree.
Huh? You disagree? Let's, well, thank you. As the chair of the meeting, thank you. Please don't interrupt me councillor. When you turn, let's go through this one by one, word for word. We have plenty of lawyers in the room. Acknowledges significance of the Australian flag as a symbol of national party unity.
What is wrong with that?
Excuse me.
What is wrong with that?
Nothing's wrong with that, full stop. And resolves to fly the Australian flag on all buildings, right? Now, you said it yourself, in order to fly the flags on the buildings, you want to report first to work out what that's going to cost, correct?
Correct.
All right, great. So that becomes.
Fine, remove the last part and resolves, that's fine, I'm happy to.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be moved, so we're going through the wording here and acknowledging it, right?
Number one is correct.
Yes, now it is correct.
Perfect, you wanted to remove it completely.
Two statements in one point, right?
To remove it completely, actually, not you councillor.
No, he didn't councillor, no, he didn't. He's, he's, he said it numerous times.
But he also, I was, look, that's not what I'm arguing about, but the disrespect shown flying flying it on the toilet block is unacceptable. We've had people, people fight under that flag. You'd never say something like that. It's common sense, common sense.
So the point number two, right, huh? Yes, councillor Hart, right of reply?
Keep going, go through the motion, you said.
No, no, you've, you've, you're, you're, you're having a go at a councillor. He wants a right of reply. I'm happy to allow him to speak. Councillor Hart?
I had no intent to disrespect the Australian flag first and foremost, and you know exactly what I said councillor Rusevsky. And that was a question on the tightness of this motion. Uh, this motion as it stood was one that would, you know, there there are cracks there. And I want to make sure as a good governing body that we've passed a motion, which I think. The majority of us are in agreeance on or ha- agree on the spirit of the motion, which I very much am, so don't accuse me of not being at all. Um, and we are trying to, I know you're trying to score some political points here, because I know you've been in the media about this. But please do not misconstrue my words. I was trying to be constructive and I don't think your comment was constructive whatsoever.
All right. So next, the next point, point number two. So that once again is putting the cart before the horse, because if we're writing a letter to the federal government. We don't know what this initiative is going to cost. So that should come back when we get the report back.
A second, let me comment. Um, I don't think you understand how balance sheets work. You write to the federal government. Then we know if we can get some funding for this, rather than us paying for the cost. We need to know that. If they say no, then we know our numbers. There's nothing wrong with point number two.
Nothing wrong with, so how much are we asking them for?
The report says to work out the costing. We let the federal government know what it costs. Will they support us?
Which is what I just said. You get the cost first.
Managers know how to do this. Try not to micromanage everything, because I know you walk into the CEO's office every two minutes.
Sorry councillor.
Stay in your own lane.
Sorry councillor. Point of order, yes, we would like to.
Oh, point of order, Mister Mayor, I'd like to, that that comment needs to be withdrawn. It adds nothing to the debate. It is personal and it's needs to be withdrawn. What simply is trying to happen here is to put forward a legal motion that councillor Hart has said that there is broad support for the spirit of the motion. If we're going to do things, let's do them properly, it would make no sense to write to the federal government at point two. All we simply need to do is is replace point two down to point four and move the other two points up. So we know how much we're asking the federal government for.
Yep, I uphold your point of order councillor. I ask you to withdraw your comment councillor Rusevsky.
It's the truth though.
Councillor Rusevsky, I'll ask you again to please withdraw your comment.
But what if it's the truth?
Which part of it?
You constantly walking into the CEO's office.
Define, you said every two minutes?
No, but quite a lot. As a mayor, you should be focusing on cutting ribbons, handing out acknowledgements, not interfering in his role.
Councillor, councillor, yes councillor McNaut, it's your point of order.
There's accusations flying from the councillor at the chair that are completely irrelevant to this debate and to our community. And I ask him to withdraw and to stop this line of commenting.
Councillor Rusevsky, a second point of order has been raised. I uphold the point of order. I ask you once again, in the spirit of. Part of the Moncrief who was here earlier, in the spirit of the people taking their time to continue on this meeting in a respectful manner. Your comments, I find them extremely disrespectful, right? We're trying to work out a motion that is legal, which is my responsibility as a chair of this meeting to put forward. Right? So I'll ask you once again to please withdraw your comment.
For the spirit of this motion, I really don't want it, but I will. I'll I'll be the, um, bigger person. Because this is a very important motion and the disrespect shown by the Liberal Party today is terrible.
You take this one?
Councillor Monahan?
Sorry, one of your councillors is a Liberal Party member.
And what has he done? His question is, what did he do to disrespect this?
Well, do you want to repeat what you said about the toilet block?
I didn't say anything about the toilet block.
If you want to rewind the.
I was the one that raised the point of order with you.
Okay. Councillors, councillors, can I ask everyone to, I ask everyone to please be quiet? I'm not going to play this game. People aren't here for this sort of stuff, okay? So point one works. Point number two, we have to put at the end of that. Once we receive a report on the cost, right? Point three. Cannot be at the next council meeting, right? So how much, can I see, how much time would you like to be able to prepare that? I know there's many things on your your agenda at the moment. When is an appropriate time? April? The report says April. So in April, I think it's already answered that. A cost of a flagpole on every council building. CEO, can I please have a determine the, can I please have a definition? When you read that as written, what does it mean by every council building and what could it include?
Uh, two hundred and seventy-one buildings. So I I think every appropriate council building is fair, is a fair common ground. So let me determine what would be a, an appropriate place to display the flag.
Great. All right, councillor Conneeb?
Can I just add, just the commentary about every appropriate council building, the council building. And all the library, as in our our new site and any other appropriate council building. Because I think that's one of the most significant in terms of its site, its location, its importance to the community.
That's right. Yeah, because if you don't put any, if you don't, if you kept it as is, then you could literally come back with a report saying every building, right? Because that's what the motion is now, with that provides a figure, um.
Yes, and I'll just, in terms of point four, um, the three official flags.
Okay, so point number, just one, just one. I think, just after the word building in point three. The determine a funding source, can we just put that as a separate point? Please, just cut that off, make that a, a point at the end. And five. So now we're specifying one particular building in point five, yeah. So I'll put there, I guess, in April as well. Sorry, move then from the next council meeting. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, through the chair, I just need an interpretation, perhaps, what is, what is a very large flag? And what is a significant flagpole? If you leave that interpretation to me that suits the environment, is it, okay?
So, uh, rather than the word in point four, determine, identify. Because it's up to council to determine. The CEO can identify. And if we go back to point number two, because that might, let me just think for, I don't know. If, in in in, normally we would say that would be, you would say direct to the acting CEO identifying a funding source. Uh, and also, uh, including grants from the state and federal government.
I think the other issue with three is it's not just installing a flagpole. It needs to be flagpole slash S. But also, um, the cost of 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 doing, of of actually conducting the flying of of the flag. Um, and so on and so forth. So that needs to be fixed in three. Um, and then the three, a very large Australian flag needs to be changed, saying it again, to three, uh, the official flags.
So. So point one works. Point two, I'll get to you guys in a second. Let me just wait till the photo goes. So point three, flagpoles?
Yes, I I think the amendments I just suggested have been put in five as opposed to three. Yes, correct. The cost of installing, so at three, exactly where you are, the cost of installing, not a flagpole, it can, it can be at.
Flagpoles.
Poles, um, on every, flagpoles and the cost of flying.
The flying, what? Well, that's, yeah.
And 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 all associated cost involves in the operation of flying the flags.
Yep. And so do you want to say the three official flags as part of that? So it's clear?
I think it should be said there and I think it should be said at at point five.
Yeah. Well, if you just make, uh. You could just put, you could really just get rid of point five by going to point three and just saying, comma, including a very. Very significant flag on, just chop off, uh, cut and paste from point five. Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right councillor Monahan. I think an appropriately sized flag is something of of that, of that commentary, yeah.
Not appropriately sized?
Sorry, I'll take my mic off.
Why not just appropriately sized instead of very large? Because.
Yeah.
Let's be sensible, eh?
It's a useful, um, a useful, um, suggestion councillor Monahan, thank you, use.
English words, eh?
Okay. All right.
Sorry, can I just double check that in point three, that will include all of the things that were identified in the report by the acting CEO, which includes. Yeah, because, you know, soil testing and things like that, should they be ne- necessary? So I guess that comes with the the cost of flying, uh, associated costs of. So cost of installing flagpoles, okay, it's okay, that would be covered under the cost of installing the flagpoles.
That's probably important. Um, just the last part of point three, the three official national flags to sit on top of the new library on Scott Street. It may not be the new library on Scott Street. It may, it may just be in the foyer area. For example, where we put the, so I I think just anywhere the cost associated with, you know, it's a matter for council to staff to determine. Where is it appropriate, depending on safety and and all other factors that they've got to consider.
And just for for clarity, that it's the, you're talking about the, um, indigenous flag and the Torres Strait Islander flag.
The three flags I mentioned earlier.
Do you want us to put that in there just so it's it's clear?
Yeah, the three official national flags being the Australian flag, yeah.
Because I don't think we have to fly the New South Wales flag or the Liverpool flag. I said we don't have to fly the New South Wales nor the New South Wales flag nor the, um, um, Liverpool flag.
If the mover and seconder are content with those changes.
Indigenous, sorry, indigenous flag rather than Aboriginal, sorry. And can we just put a, uh, remove the word and from point three, just there where you were, go back please. And just put, including operational protocol costs. All right. Sorry. Yeah. Yes, great. All right. Uh, are the mover and seconder happy with that? See councillor AJ?
So just on point number four, why the acting CEO identifying funding and sources grant from the federal government? I would like to include that it was talked to the state government, because we are forgetting that we have public schools and private schools. Um, I don't know if their flags are in schools already, um, to be able to represent Australia in the primary schools, secondary schools. And those schools, so if you can, if it's already there, we don't duplicate things while we are asking for funding as well.
Well, you probably could put on point two, uh, because it's got federal government, you put federal and state government, so after the word federal. Now, but point two only said writing to the federal government. Yes, you could kind, you could merge them, but I think for the, yes. I think we did good. Who needs chat GPT, huh?
I just need to point out, um, there's only one national flag and that's the, um, the one that we have. The, if, what you guys are talking about is official flags. There is only one national flag.
I'll seek some clarification on that if anyone.
The, um, the report does say that they are the official flags, the national flag. The Torres Strait Islander flag and the indigenous flag. And I think point three says the official flags. The three official, sorry, if you remove the word national from between, yeah, the three official flags.
Uh, thank you through the chair. So let's just go back to the report. It does demarcate quite clearly at the third paragraph of my comment. It recognizes that Australia has three official flags. Um, the Australian national flag, the Australian Aboriginal flag and the Torres Strait Islander flag. Council. Council would need to consider whether it would be appropriate on each occasion to install all three. So I think if you trust me to respond to the April council meeting with a range of alternatives. And also note that the, the report talks about the long term financial plan. So if it's not council's intention to saturate every building at the same time, perhaps we should prioritize some of the buildings. And I'd give you a cost that can be spread across a number of years. And it may include the one flag or the three flags based on your decisions in April.
Do we need point four? It's basically point two. Not particularly, you could, um. I think just for the sake of it, let's leave it, it does a job and let's move on. I think that's a well drafted motion. Thank you. Wonderful, it's very useful, very useful, alright. So the mover, mover, are you happy with that?
Personally, no, I I believe in the, uh, national flag, but to let this go to the keeper to the next meeting, let's move on.
Okay, so you accept this, you accept these amendments as to, as part of your motion, great. Is the second are happy with that? Great. Would you like to write a reply councillor Rusevsky? No, I'll, I'll put the motion, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Against or declare unanimous? Now where'd my paper go? Okay. Sorry, who's got their microphone on? No one does?
I have an urgency motion if I can, please.
What's your urgency motion councillor?
It's in regards to the closure of the community justice centres across New South Wales. Which will take effect as of the thirtieth of June twenty twenty-five. My urgency motion is to write to the attorney general's office requesting that these offices remain open. As a matter of urgency.
And why, why is it urgent?
Because it affects our community, the people of Liverpool. They did not consult with council or our community to have these offices closed. Currently, a lot of families depend on these services and they will definitely be missing out, adding to the cost of legal fees. To them and to their families in a crisis that we're living in at the moment.
So it's saying it's going to close on thirty of June two thousand and twenty-five?
Yes.
So therefore you want to create, you want to advocate as soon as possible to prevent that closure happening, the sooner you do it, the better.
Yes.
That way, that will, you have a higher success rate.
Yeah.
That is, happy to accept that is as urgent, um, on that basis. Um, feel free to move your motion councillor. Seconded councillor, um, Monahan? Sorry, microphone please, yeah, yeah. Mike, um, did you want to speak for your motion or you want to go through it a bit, read a bit more or you let it?
Now, happy, happy to put it up as, as it is, just want to, just want to make, just point out that this service is provided for people that. Can't afford to go to lawyers, can't afford to go through the. Courts, they are able to settle their disputes through these type of measures. Taking these measures away from the community such as ours, it's going to be a big, big, big negative on them. Um, I call on, um, the attorney's office, I call on the state government, O L G. To actually write and advocate as hard as we can to have these offices remain open. Because it is of great significance to our community and all other communities in the state. Because once these offices go, people will have nowhere to go in terms of getting their legals.
Wonderful, are any of the speakers for councillor Conneeb and I've got councillor Green afterwards?
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I've got no issues with advocating for, you know, access to justice for all constituents in Liverpool. But I think it's also important and, uh, that councillor, when councillor Moon raises this, it brings to my mind. The significant amount of work that the South West Sydney Legal Centre did do for a considerable period of time. And whilst their operation doesn't remain in Liverpool and they've undertaken a significant rebranding. I know for a fact in my experience, because I deal with solicitors and I've dealt with solicitors, um, from their office before. They're now referred to as the Justice Support Centre based out of Bangstown. Um, but what they do do is they don't just service, um, Bangstown area. But they in fact come and operate out of Liverpool Court, I know for a fact on a Wednesday. But they don't just do criminal related matters, they also do victim support services, family law and all of that type of stuff. So I'm actually kind of interested to see exactly where this comes from, um. Because I, I have not heard a thing about them closing down and whilst they don't operate in Liverpool, they are the former South West Sydney Legal Centre, which ascends. Yeah, no, no, I, I'm, I'm, yeah, I, I agree, and that's why I think that whilst we do this, it's probably also good to, you know, acknowledge the work that. Uh, the former South West Sydney Legal Centre did and the current Justice, uh, Support Centre do, even though they're based out of Bangstown. I know very much so that they service, uh, Liverpool residents as much as they do Bangstown, that's just where they're based and they're all in Liverpool for decades. Uh, they were up on Mall Street for quite some time.
Yeah, great, um, yeah, maybe if we can get some information circulated at the next, whenever, about this, it'd be good to know as well, it seems very silent. Councillor Green?
Speaking from my experience of thirty years working in the community sector. Community justice centres are an important aspect, um, of, of service in that. Within the legal system, there's a winner and a loser. With community justice centres, you're looking at coming to a, a agreement between the parties, discussing the problem. It's a win-win for both and it, it allows people to be heard. Um, and is a much cheaper, uh, alternative. They don't need to get involved in the criminal, in the, the court system at all. Because it, it's, even though it's not bound as if a, uh, uh, a, um, court order. But it's, it's something that they, that both parties have worked together on. They are an integral part of lea- of access, uh, of to legal access to citizens, uh, all that from. Disputes between neighbours, custody issues, family law, it's, it's, they, they're a very, very important. Part of the, um, the, the, the justice system for, uh, for the community.
Wonderful, councillor McNaul?
If I can just add to that and, and I thank everyone for their words on the floor and for this motion. Um, if there's an opportunity for us, it's such an essential service for our community, particularly when we don't want to clog up the sports, the court system if we don't have to. Uh, in, in the cost of living, um, pressures that everybody is under, whether or not there's an opportunity to not only lobby not to close down this service. But to in fact look at the funding that goes to this service and perhaps advocate for a little bit more if that's necessary. If it's not keeping up with demand in the area, I don't know how we do, we can get that into that motion as well. But, you know, it's obviously a service that our community uses. Um, and whether or not we can in fact advocate for more resources into that from the state if possible.
Thank you McNaul, councillor McNaul for that very useful suggestion. There any else, anything else, anybody want to add? No, okay, uh, I will put the motion then, all those in favor, please raise your hands, against or declare unanimous. Okay, great. Now, back to page one five, one, one fifty-five in the booklet, nom zero three. No, um, yeah, nom zero three, with the recommendation on page one hundred and fifty-six, national anthem at council meetings.
I moved that way and, uh, this was actually a motion that was suggested by, uh, B J from the Pulse. On, uh, every Thursday is at nine thirty to G L F, so I thought it was a great motion, I won't speak on it too much as he, as he spoke on it. So let's, uh, let's support this initiative.
What's your, what's your point of order councillor?
Are we advertising radio stations now?
It's a, it's a local community radio, radio station, so it's. Um, thank you, okay, um, uh, is there a second for the motion? Seconded councillor Conneeb? Councillor AJ or councillor?
I'm Mr Mayor, I just wanted to point out something that in the, um, in the preamble and it's, it is pointed out in the report. But it just says incorporating this practice into our council meetings, not, this has been incorporated since two thousand and seventeen into the council meetings. And it does say that in the, um, in the, um, acting CEO's report, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that we.
Was it, uh, in two, say, two thousand and seventeen?
Two thousand and seventeen, I remember the discussion.
The discuss, can you illuminate us a little bit more?
I remember the discussion over the singing the second verse of the National Anthem, but anyway, it was resolved back then to sing the anthem before, um, the council meetings. Um, so, and we have done that ever since, so I think that's important.
Wonderful, I'd just, one second, I'll be forget you.
I, I think you're missing, I think you're missing the motion, it's not saying to sing it, it's saying to bring some school kids and. Bring it out to an expressions of interest, that's all I'm saying.
In the first, um, paragraph of the preamble, incorporating this practice into our community meetings, it's already incorporated.
So I think it's, uh, the point is that it doesn't highlight that it's getting other people to put in, getting to it, so yes, your point, point taken. Before I get to councillor AJ, do you?
Okay, councillor Conneeb? Uh, when I seconded the motion, I get, I guess my intent about supporting a motion like this is, look, I went to, I went to sadly a public in Ashcroft Tyre here. And as a kid, I would have loved the opportunity to be able to be asked to come to these things. Although our council meetings do commence at six and the intricacies and the safety measures around public schools, and I gauge that. I don't know whether or not embedding it in there monthly, I think what a, what an appropriate thing to do would be is to go out to see expresses, expressions of interest. To see if some schools in the, in the area, public or private, would wish to come and perform, not just at a council meeting and it doesn't need to be monthly. Because of course, for whatever reason, our council meetings go the distance, month in and month out. Um, but I think that it's important to incorporate, it's inco- it's important to import, incorporate our school kids. But I think it's, it's, it's important to do so, like, it would have been lovely to see them, for example, sing the Australian National Anthem at the Australia Day, um, event, things of that nature. So days of significance, perhaps the Christmas council meeting, um, when it's, you know. Um, it, it's things of that nature, so I think it needs to be extended not to necessarily monthly, um, council meetings, but the expressions of interest can go out there. Um, and then council staff can gauge and come back and say we've had nil interest or we've had some interest. And then we can assess that from there, um, but also expressions of interests for, you know, I know that, you know, I think it's. Director Miss Bonner does a bit of work, I, I think this falls in, in that directorate in terms of seeing the way we can in- increase the level of. Y- youth community engagement at these types of, um, events, because it was, it would be certainly nice to, to have kids to come out to these things. Um, and I, I think at this stage, it's just really seeing, seeking going out and expression of interest, not just to school, well, just to schools. But not just at each council meeting, so at council meetings, um, perhaps any other special events, um.
If, yeah, so if I can do that, good point, if we could go in there to achieve that, I reckon if we went to after the word. At council meetings and appropriate council events. And then rather than say at each council meeting, when possible.
Yes, like for example, I haven't attended a youth council, um, event yet, just yet, but I think it would be, it would be nice for it to occur at something like that. Or, you know, one of our council meetings a year or a couple of them, depending on how many, how many interested school we get. Uh, how many interested schools we get, if we get an abundance of them, of course inclusivity is paramount, uh, but if we don't, then we, uh, we measure it out, that's my position on it.
Wonderful, is the, uh, mover happy without that wording?
Uh, maybe we should also include the, uh, citizenship ceremony in there as well.
Yeah, um, I think that's why we say we have appropriate council events and we, we do have someone who already sings the National Anthem, a professional comes, so there's. Okay, so I'll take that as yes, councillor AJ?
Um, thank you for the beautiful, um, emotion, but I, I would like to propose an amendment, if it's okay. Um, to recognize our fabulous faith community multicultural in, um, Liverpool. Um, if we can also have other faith brothers and sisters from all faiths to come and bless us. Because, um, I know we invite different, um, priests and pastors to come and bless us. But, um, Liverpool is such an amazing community with different type of faith. So if we can make that amendment to this, to bring the community spirit. Yeah.
Um, I'm just looking at it because we're, because this is no longer talking specifically about council meetings, we've now broadened it out. Because you're, you're referring to the prayer of council, yeah. I think because we've now broadened it, it probably would come across as, that's probably best for another time then I would say, because we're not specifically on council. No longer, if this was still council meetings, I think it'd be, it'd still be relevant. But, uh, maybe you want to put that up as a. Yeah.
I, I'll raise it as a nom for the next meeting.
Thank you, thank you councillor, yeah. Alright, is there any further discussion? No, okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favor, against, I declare unanimous. Um, thank councillors, I'll call a recess, uh, till, uh, eight, ten, uh, P M, thank you. I declare the meeting officially resumed. We're now on page one hundred and fifty-seven, nom four. Insulation of Christmas tree lights along Macquarie Street.
Yeah, I'd like to move as per the, uh, motion.
The, um. Is there a second there? Second deputy mayor, I'm just looking at, uh, the point one and point two.
I don't believe point two needs to be there, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, because I think it contradicts itself, see that's, you consider it for next year's budget. You know, for.
Well, um, we do have, um. With the, uh, councillor Rusevsky is up and to the, to take it out because we do have the budget workshops coming up. I think we start in, we asked earlier, so we march, are we starting in?
Yeah.
I know very soon according, so, I mean, we can factor that in then, it doesn't really need to be taken from anywhere. Because we'll be planning on the, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Yes, I think that makes, that makes proper sense, I'll refer to the CEO.
Just might refer to the director corporate support in relation to the timings and.
Through you, uh, general manager, um, just be aware councillors that, um, any, anything in relation to the twenty-five, six budget. Uh, you can't approve anything now, you can only, uh, move that it be considered. And then in May, when the budget is prepared, it'll go out for public exhibition and then you adopt the budget in June. So you can't adopt a twenty-five, six expense now because it still has to go through that process.
Yeah, or, yeah.
Yeah, so in reality, uh, point one is valid. Um, and, and point two theoretically doesn't exist because we don't have, we don't actually have a budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, right? So is the mover and second are happy to remove point two?
Uh, yes, I'm happy, but also want to thank the CEO for making, uh, an effort to show that, uh, apparently the most blessed knights are. Uh, are going to have an increased revenue, so he was trying to contra the cost, so thank you for pointing that out.
Alright, no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favor, against, I declare it, uh, unanimous. Next item is page one hundred and sixty, nom zero five.
Can I actually, uh, defer this motion, I was hoping to have some, uh, legal correspondence attached to it, but I don't have it with me. So if I can refer, sorry, defer this motion completely.
Move that it be deferred, is there a second there? Second councillor Green, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favor, against, I declare that carried. Next item is page one hundred and sixty-two, nom zero six.
Can I make an amendment to my motion?
You can move a motion.
Okay, um. Somehow if we can just put in there if they pay their, um, their second year in advance, uh, having a read of the comments by the CEO. Um, was it the CEO?
No, no, but, no, no, the, there's no need for a second copy, no, no, as in like, the copy and paste, we still, councillor Rusevsky is moving a motion. So what's the, um, the motion is?
So, uh, who pay their following year rates in advance, so if they pay their second year rates in advance, um, if we can just add that wording to my motion. Uh, now that I have the complete data of, uh, what it will cost, I think it's financially prudent to make an amendment.
Yeah, so what, what you're saying is basically someone who pays two years in advance? Yeah, alright. And that five percent discount, does that apply to both years or just the second year? Okay, the council approves implementation of a hybrid system on, can we just remove the word on, on annual council rates for payers who pay. Who pay two years in full with a discount. On the second year.
I think the first, yeah, I think the first sentence needs to be that council approves the implementation of a five percent discount on annual count, council rates for rate payers. the implementation of a 5% discount on annual coun- council rates for rate payers for the second year, for those who pay two years in full.
So I think the challenge with that, uh, would be that we don't actually know what the second year's rates actually are. So, because that gets developed as part of the budget process. So that would be unworkable. All right. Councillor Kineb and councillor McNod or?
Oh, sorry, councillor McNod.
Councillor McNod.
I'd like to propose a foreshadowed motion that we defer this for further discussion at the next available governance committee meeting. I think ju- just, um, you know, based on the report that we've received today, it just needs a little bit more working. And I think that we are, um, we're looking at, you know, the, the theme I'm, I, I take is that we are, um, trying to, you know, get our cash flow obviously, um, coming in more promptly. Um, I think that there may be other ways that need to be modelled, that we can do this as well. Um, so I do think rather that, and, and I agree that we do want to, um, find ways to get these rates paid the best way that we can, but I think there's a little bit more work that we could do. Um, and so I'd like to just defer it for a little bit more discussion and a report on.
Is there a second for that? Is there a second for deferral?
Happy to second.
Yeah. Deputy mayor is happy to second?
Sorry, through the chair, I actually have a question on that, on the legalities. I remember distinctly through the COVID-19 episodes that we had, we could not offer discounts. We could not reduce the rates. It's a legal requirement and I think you need to check that. At the time, we were not allowed to reduce the rate. We're not allowed to give special rates to, to people hu- other than hardship. And I think even that, you couldn't reduce it, they had to eventually pay. So I would expect, I think we need some legal advice.
Well, we, we do have our, our, our rates expert who's here with us, if you'd like to hear from him.
Yeah.
Who always provides insight, in, in, very useful and insightful information. Sorry, through the CEO.
I, uh, through the CEO, look during COVID, I'll just address that moment first. The only restrictions we had during COVID was council was unable to charge interest on overdue rates for a period of six months. And council was unable to commence debt recovery for a period of 12 months.
Sorry, questioner, but I thought we weren't allowed to reduce, we weren't allowed to offer a discount.
Under the act, it, it says 563, that you can offer discounts for prompt payment in full. So not based on hardship or any other issues, it's something that would apply across the board. Just on that, there's not, not aware of any council in Sydney that offers a discount just to the, the cost.
Councillor McNod?
If I can ask that, um, as, as part of the deferral, uh, should that, um, motion succeed, that, um, in, in the, in the interest of time moving this forward, that if we have any specific questions, that we might email them to the director before that governance meeting, say within the next seven days or so, so that we can at least forearm you with the questions we may have.
Yeah, thank, yeah, great, thank you. Um, which is probably the best time for that deal, or councillor Kineb?
Look, I, I was just going to say, I think the, the heart of councillor Restevsky's motion, uh, i- i- is quite good because we're in a position where the cost of living is at an all time high. And if there is any way, um, that you can, and, and it's difficult because I guess the intent is to give people a discount. But those people who are able to afford it may not necessarily be the ones who get the discount because they're paying for it upfront. But it also, the opposing, the opposing benefit there is, it gets council money now, um, which I think is a good consideration to have. But weighing up the pros and cons and, and the benefit of it, it's important because if there is a way to give residents a rate cut, if the raiders get money in the bank sooner rather than later, then I think that's a win-win for everyone. Although we may take an initial hit, I think the, the initial, um, surplus of funds would certainly be of assistance in the current climate. Um, how we go about that in terms of the second year, I, I think there's a concern because you need to know what the rates of the second year are, otherwise how do you do it? You can't just, actually just perhaps a question to the rela- through the CEO, to the relevant director, directorate. Is it the case that the rates would go up on a CPI percentage per annum? And then discretionarily increased there, thereafter? Has it, has it, has, does history say that it's a, the same percentage each year or no?
No, I part determine the rate increase for each year across all councils. For next year being 25, 26, they've approved a 6% increase for Liverpool. Yeah, so I think the standard was 4.9 across New South Wales, but council got additional roughly 1% because we're a growth council. So we're, we're governed by IPART, you aren't anything more than that. You have to apply to IPART and get community consultation as well.
Can I ask just? All councils or most councils received a 4.9% increase for next year. We've received a 6% because we're a growth council. Sorry, I'll take my microphone.
It varied from around 4.9 up to, I think Camden got seven. So yeah, there's a, all the growth, all the growth councils got a little bit extra, yes.
I, I don't think it's necessary to defer this motion, I'll tell you why. The CEO has done a great job in outlining the actual numbers here. And that's why I've changed my motion because his research, he's done the research on it and he's done a great job. Maybe we can say a 5% credit based on the current rates. They get it for a credit if they pay, um, next year's rates, whatever they may be, by the 5% of the, uh, rate in the current year. I don't know how to word it, but, um, there's definitely no need to defer this thing. It's all there, it's all in front of us, just that wording, if we can get that right, I think this should move on.
Can I just get through the CEO, through Mr Grass, some clarification on that proposal?
It would be difficult to administer that. Uh, we need to know, the, the act's quite specific, give a discount on that year's rates. Administerively, it'd be a nightmare, it, it really would. And I think what council has to, just probably expanding on the comments in there is that any discount, currently 14% of our residents pay in full. We offer a discount straight away off the bat, those 14% will get a discount. And that's going to give council an immediate hit, a loss of 1.5 million. Any bit of increase because of the inducement, it, it's going to be an extra cost as well. And I might add too, if this council or the next council in future years think that they need to make an application to IPART for any rate increase in the future, they'd look at this policy if it were to go ahead and think, well, you're giving away one and a half or two million dollars in discounts and now you're potentially requesting for more. So just something to keep in mind.
Councillor AJ?
Yeah, um, just, um, to the mayor and to the CEO, to the director. Um, I, I believe that if people are already paying advance, we should consider those who are struggling, um, to pay, um, their rights and then incentivize them or give them something to catch up. But if I'm already paying advance and you're going to give me a discount, I think it's going to cost us more. And then those who are struggling are still going to defer. So, uh, maybe if we can, well, if the councillor, um, Peter is okay to let them module something, come back with more details. I mean, the heart of it is good if we can encourage people to pay more and in advance, it's good. But, um, maybe it's not legally, it's not going to benefit us. Or doing research, it's not going to benefit council. So that's what I'll suggest. If we give them more time to look into it and see the benefit of making that decision.
Councillor McNod?
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to, I, I guess, uh, the, um, speak for my motion and against the, against the motion before us. Just that, you know, we are having this discussion now here and we're making potentially, you know, mod- trying to model things on the run. I think that there is absolute merit in waiting for submitting all of the scenarios and questions that we have. Um, if we're talking about cash flow and we're talking about, you know, people who, who aren't able to pay their rates, um, perhaps a mechanism of incentivising those rates to come in rather than the, you know, the people who, who we know are going to pay and will take a, a 1.5 million dollar hit for that. So, you know, there's, there's merit in having a, a much more detailed discussion to get this right. So that we do, I am absolutely with the, um, the idea around the motion to, to boost cash flow. But I think that we need to be careful about the way that we do that and make sure that we do it the best way that, um, works for council.
If, if I could add through the CEO?
Yes, sir.
Um, in regards to, um, giving any discount, what I'd keep in mind is whilst 14% of people pay their rates in full, the other approximately 80% pay by instalment. So you, council will receive at least one quarter already by that due date of 31st of August. So in essence, we're giving a big discount for 14% already paying full. And then the other 80% are giving you one quarter anyway. So really, we, we've done the modelling a number of years ago and it just, um, it just was very difficult to make it work.
Cool. Um, thank you, just so councillor Restevsky, um, just want to clarify, uh, you said you want to continue with your motion. Um, so you're saying a 5% discount on the rates for rate payers? That's, so that's you, that's for all rate payers? Everyone? Yeah, sorry, can you microphone please?
The reason I offer the second year 5% discount, um, we would make that anyway on the investments we have. So it's actually not costing us anything at all, but it gives us cash flow.
So that's for, once again, so that's for all rate payers? Yeah, cool. So Westfield, who I think is our biggest rate payer, right? So they would get the 5% discount?
Yeah, what's, we can put that towards the, the interest on the loan and I'm sure we pay more than 5%.
But I'm saying like, so what's, can I ask roughly, well, Westfield's what up to like 400 grand a year or something?
Uh, um, no, about three million.
Oh, sorry, wrong.
Yeah, and you've got other organisations like, uh, Department of Housing.
Yeah.
They pay council, um, about five million.
Yeah.
As well, so the opens up all these and we've got to remember the rates are a secure debt. We will never not get our money. Um, and for the portion that council doesn't receive on time, council's receiving 10 and a half percent interest on that debt. You can't get that investment anywhere and that's secure. So we, we never write off the rates, we'll always get it.
Yeah. And like people like Liberty Towers that owns, one person owns 250 units would get a, in this situation. The people like, I think was pointed, I think you said a council, the, the people who can, uh, afford it, afford it with big cash flow will benefit from this.
Can I ask through the CEO, what are we paying in interest rate on our loans?
I'll, I'll refer to the director of corporate services.
Uh, off memory, it's, it's around six, six and a half percent. They're fixed, they're fixed loans, um, which, which are competitive in the, in the, in the market, certainly when they're taken. Um, but can I make a comment if I may, um, in regard to, uh, the, the coordinate rates is, is clearly indicated that, um, paying in advance for the current year, uh, is, is not going to generate income. In fact, it's going to be, go the other way. Uh, in terms of living rates for the, a, a discount for pay, people paying for the second year, um, I doubt that's legal because we have to go through a community consultation process. We have to do a strategic plan, a delivery plan, an operational plan, a budget. We have to get, um, determine what services we're going to provide in, before we can seek, uh, um, determine our incomes to fund that, that program. You're now looking to, you are now looking to factor in rates in year two without a, without, um, having gone through the budget process. Um, so that needs to be looked at. I, 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 I would urge council to, um, discuss it in the governance meeting so we can get time to do that research and, and clarify those, um, potential issues.
To, to that point, um, I just have a question. Are we even able to make decisions on, uh, the 20, it would be the 26, 27 budget right here and right now? Because that's what that motion is essentially doing because it's, i- i- impacts on our revenue.
What you, you would, you would, uh, at least need the, the long-term financial plan and forward project its effects on that. I would say at a bare minimum before you could make a decision on something of this, um, magnitude in the first instance.
Based on what, uh, the director just said, I, I'm happy to, uh, move it to a, uh, governance meeting where we can workshop the idea. Um, I think there is a solution in there somewhere. And, um, especially if we can get money in advance and if we're paying 6.5% in interest, it makes economic sense.
So defer it and then?
So the, uh, the, the foreshadowed motion then becomes the motion? Um, councillor McNod, are you, are you now happy to second the motion? As a mover of the foreshadowed motion? Wonderful, it'd be very useful, thank you. Um, wonderful. Any further, councillor Restevsky, any further discussion? No, I will put the motion then, all those in favour, please show your hands, those against, thank you. Next item on the agenda is nom zero seven, page 165, tab 19, with the recommendation of page 166.
Yeah, I move to, towards the motion in the book.
Great, move councillor Restevsky, second at councillor Kineb. Uh, point two in its current wording, uh, does not, uh, is illegal because council cannot direct the finance department, council can direct the CEO. So we will have to change. And just to be consistent with all our motions, if you can please remove the words that Liverpool City, just put that council. So they, yeah. To directs the CEO. Now the next word's implement and monitor compliance. Ultimately, council is responsible for the budget and the decision of expenditure of funds. So I don't see how staff could be responsible for implementation and monitoring. Um, that could maybe be along the lines of, uh, re- provide a report to council on a quarterly basis. Right? Right? And then, once again, the part about if you now, but the sec point number two is directing the CEO to put a freeze on any discretionary spend.
Mr Mayor, wouldn't that require a resolution of council because it would be a budget variation?
Correct. Um, but I'm just thinking, you would at least have that as a point three. So you'd be directing the CEO to put a freeze on any discretionary spending, they'll put unrestricted cash flows below 25 million dollars. And once again, that would be, that would have to be a resolution of us, which we can do as part of this. Also, Mr Me- oh. Councillor Green?
I offer that, um, not in, not getting down into the, not the weeds, but the granularity of the, of the motion. Uh, wouldn't that kind of, um, point be actually in the policy? But, but, because you're going to, to develop the policy. So how? I know there's no policy councillor Restevsky. What I'm saying is that having that in the motion, i- i- is that not something you would put into the policy?
Mr Mayor, uh, one being establishes a policy to maintain a min- minimum of 25 million dollars in unrestricted cash reserves, being as such that that policy will come back to council, then be enacted. And then therefore there will be that minimum threshold that we can't go over. I think, I guess the underlying intent of this motion is I, from a councillor perspective, being myself, I would like the ability for councillors to, for, for council staff to come to us and say, look, we've hit a figure and that figure's the red flag figure and we can't surpass that figure. Um, I don't necessarily want a quarterly report, I want it instantaneously, even if there's no meeting. I, I want to be notified if that was to occur. So we're not in any position that puts us, that puts fo- council's financial position in a precarious one. Um, so I think one is, is fine, um, in terms of it's establishing a policy. And then that policy would encompass that it not go over that, that 25 million dollar benchmark. But I think whether or not it's three, or whether or not three, um, is changed or added as a fall to basically include, um, that council laws are notified as a result of any spending that is on the verge of surpassing the base minimum being. being 25 million dollars. I think as a result of that, it would be a no brainer for councillors to call an urgency meeting or an extraordinary meeting to discuss it. I think that's the purpose of it, to establish a baseline, to not go over that baseline, and then we become informed of that baseline being reached.
Thank you. Councillor Hart?
Just on point one, if we resolve that right now, are we technically in breach of it? Because the unrestricted cash, well, depending on the, how much money's in the unrestricted cash reserve, I suppose?
The answer is no, we don't need a policy, full stop. Just resolve, if you wish, to put a new threshold on, the 25 million dollars and you're not in breach of anything. The assumption is that on, we have got zero at the moment. So we are to achieve and maintain a minimum of 25 million. And three is, is a challenge because we would have to meet the threshold before three would be in play. That is, we'd have to get 26 before three makes a difference. Yep. But you don't, we don't need a policy, just make the resolution at, at the threshold you achieve. We will undertake to give you, sorry, council officers will undertake, will give you a gradual build up of, as we achieve that threshold and what kind of period that might be in long-term financial projections. And then three's in play.
So instead of saying policy, should we change it to a benchmark to maintain a minimum of 25 million dollars in unrestricted cash reserve?
You can just do that now as a resolution.
Is that amenable to the mover and second?
Yeah, yeah, I, I. Yes, so thank you once again, I agree with that.
I think the word should be of maintaining.
Can I just ask, what, what is the consequence then of us if we were to dip below the 25 million?
The, the consequence would be material only in the fact that you've set a threshold at 25 million. It, it doesn't really affect our ability to operate. It is your appetite of a threshold of cash reserves. Some councils have much higher, some councils have less.
So then the other part. Would we, would we send, to your point councillor Carnib, and provide updates regularly to council?
I just think that point three should essentially be at the discretion of the acting CEO.
Point three or point two, you mean? About when?
No, no, point two will occur nonetheless, you can assume as part of the functions of operations of council. But I think in terms of notification of councillors, I think it's discretionary upon the acting CEO or the CEO to notify councillors and the executive leadership team if that benchmark is reached as a matter of urgency.
Can I recommend, because we have, we get the investment report on a monthly basis, can we just not put the cash reserve balance as an extra page to that report, the CEO?
We can do, Mr Mayor. You, you get it every quarter in any case, as now, as it stands. So if you, as the, as the CEO indicates in the report, once you make the decision and your decision is policy, that we seek a 25 million dollar unrestricted reserve, basically when we do the 25, 6 budget and the 10-year plan going forward, we will be, we will be putting to you numbers that will provide that 25 million dollar as a minimum, reserve balance for the 10 years. And you will obviously make, make adjustments as you think fit on the basis of keeping those reserves, that level of reserves. And we will report, as we do now, every quarter.
So can we just add just another point that? Council receive the reserve balance with the, with the invest, with the monthly investment report?
We can do that.
Yeah.
So do we clarify point three, Mr Mayor?
Um, we're getting there. So now we have a regular updating regime, we have that view. Point three, so yes, CEO, you made comments about that, can you just clarify that a bit with regards to point three?
Well, it's, sorry, sorry, through the chair, it's, it's just counterintuitive. I mean, we haven't got, there's, there's no, if we're making a motion at a point of time, that three's out of play until we made above 25 million, if that's the intent of.
When, yeah, when's our, when's our next quarterly review coming through? Next meeting?
Two meetings.
Yeah, councillor Green?
But surely if we're receiving the report every month and there comes a time, a report that it dropped under that 25, surely we would be making a decision right then and there. I, I would, personally, I think point three is, is not required because as a responsible group of councillors, you know, that, that would behoove us to take action. If that is our benchmark, that's what we're saying, that is our KPI, that we will maintain that, then if it drops below, it's going to drop or it's on its way, then we should, we should respond to that.
So, yeah, yeah, we got it, yeah. Because I, I even question what's the definition of discretionary spending in the budget? You know what I mean? It's, there's not many.
And on that point, anyway.
What's discretionary?
The resolution of council I must follow is to maintain a minimum of 25 million, full stop.
On that point, if, how can the acting CEO freeze any spending when that is a budget variation?
Like I said, if the move is content with it, I'm happy with the removal of three and then we can just put the motion as is with one, two and, and four being the new three.
If we can do that, please. All right. Is the, is the, the second is happy, is councillor Restevsky is the mover of the motion, are you happy with that?
Yes.
If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against and declare unanimous. Next item is NOM 08, page 167, tab 20, with the recommendation on page 168.
I'm happy to second councillor Restevsky's motion, but I do have an amendment.
Yeah.
Actually, if that's the case, okay, then we'll see how we go.
So it's moved by councillor Restevsky, seconded by councillor Hart?
And the motion is one, that council supports the initiative to the return of the, it's now the Very Elegant Stakes as opposed to the Chipping Norton Stakes. And as an aside, they should rename it the Chipping Norton Stakes instead of naming it after a horse, but that's beside the point. So supports the initiative to relocate the Chipping Norton Stakes and other Group One. Supports the initiative to relocate the Very Elegant Stakes and other Group One races, originally run at Warwick Farm Racecourse. A comma, and then the end of the original motion revitalising the event enhancing, excuse me, enhancing community engagement in Liverpool. Keep point two as the same, add point three. Call on the Australian Turf Club to upgrade Warwick Farm Racecourse. Regardless of the Rosehill, the sale of Rosehill Racecourse. And then point four, which I'm happy to discuss, right to racing New South Wales and the Australian Turf Club to consider holding a race meeting on New Year's Eve at Warwick Farm Racecourse in conjunction with the Liverpool City Council's N Y E event. On, on that point, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr Mayor, I believe when this was initially, when, when we started having our New Year's, New Year's Eve event at Warwick Farm, that we were asking the Australian Turf Club to consider having a race meeting beforehand. They use not silent fireworks, but they're, I'm not quite sure what the word is, but they're a lot more quiet than normal fireworks. And generally, if you would have a meeting during the afternoon and then you have your fireworks at, at nine PM, you would have the horses off track by then. And that's, and the horses will be at the stables across the road. And that's where they already are during the fireworks and the trainers didn't have a problem with it for the last couple of years.
Yes. So yes, councillor, the, the racing has been such a big part of Liverpool's, the Liverpool community and culture and heritage. We thought it'd be a great opportunity to introduce people who may not go to the races, have exposure to horse racing. So it was discussed. I think maybe it was just the first time, maybe just time, but I think, and I've got a feeling that the jockeys wanted to go and enjoy New Year's Eve somewhere else and have a few, let their hair down. But I, but I think it definitely would be something pretty cool. So it was, it's, it was, I don't, I don't know where it actually ended up at the end of the day. Councillor Green?
Could I ask a question, please? With the matter of Cooper's Paddock, what works have been completed as part of that negotiated VPA?
It's kind of horse related. It's kind of horse related.
Well, I, I ask it because.
We, we met with the ATC in relation to Cooper's Paddock only three months ago. There is some negotiations and ongoing commercial terms about whether they can complete or whether it's appropriate to complete their works, particularly under, under a cycle track in a heavily bushed area behind the industrial estate adjacent to Warwick Farm Racecourse, and whether that's best value for money under the VPA. Those continues, that, that's, VPA is quite an old one. And.
Goes back, what, 12, 15 years? Would that, would that have happened at Randwick, do you think?
And it's only old because they didn't do it when they should have done it 12 years ago.
I mean, surely we've waited long enough for whether it be Cooper's Paddock, disgraceful, that a promised renovation.
Sorry.
Still, you know, has, was, you know, has been left lagging. It's almost as if Warwick Farm is the neglected orphan of the ATC. And I think it's, it's, it's long enough and, you know, we've, we are set for the airport opening. We, you know, this is a attraction, it's, and Warwick Farm is at that gateway. And it's, it's, it's about time that the ATC took their responsibility to Warwick Farm and the community and the city of Liverpool to do the investment and the work that they were supposed to do, in good faith, in good faith. They should come back to the table and get it done. And council should make it very, very clear that we expect those works to be done.
Amen to that. And I think to the mayor and the CEO, Warwick Farm need makeover, please, we, we, I used to work there when I was young and it's still the same. When we went to the, the Christmas, the New Year Eve, deputy mayor was telling me a story and I don't know if, you know, but they need to upgrade that place and make it beautiful. Thank you.
Can I just recommend councillor, I agree with the sentiments wholeheartedly and councillor AJ, but the, maybe we should bring that up at, at the next council meeting, because I think there's a, the whole overall vision for Warwick Farm, I think the deputy mayor had some views on that and we should, something for us to deal with it. But I, we both, only recently, we're talking about that present, that sit presentation on one Hoxton Park Road we received from the AJC at the time. So, but can we maybe deal with that at our next meeting?
I've just got a quicker change to point one. It should say council supports the initiative to return the Very Elegant Stakes and other Group One races run at Warwick Farm Racecourse. And then you can get rid of, from Randwick to Warwick Farm because it repeats itself. And some of the Group One races that were originally at Warwick Farm is also at Rosehill, so that wouldn't make any sense. Yes, keep on a Saturday, revitalising the event and, yep, beautiful, thank you.
Councillor has a, in that spirit, if I can refer to you?
Thank you. Through the chair. Firstly, councillor Green, you're correct to say about lagging VPAs, to use an Australian colloquialism, they ain't Robinson Crusoe. And there's a number of them that are 12 to 15 years old, which we are working through. And I would undertake to give council an update as we work through, one, Edmondson Park's another one. So with a historical VPA that hasn't been fulfilled. So we'll work through there. I think point two is again counterintuitive because we're asking the council to explore the feasibility when in the end we are, if it's not, the feasibility isn't, is a commercial decision for the ATC. And number one, if we support the initiative to reallocate, relocate races, then we don't really need to check the feasibility because if, if it's not feasible, our support won't matter. So a feasibility study doesn't take this anywhere. We just, we, we, we just get it, we put our support behind the ATC to bring as many Group One races and other races to Warwick Farm as possible. And so I think number two's out.
Councillor Carnib?
Yeah, I, I think four is a bit of a problem for me. The basis for that is, look, the New Year's Eve event at council in 2024, I didn't attend, but there was a lot of dialogue from people who did attend saying that they were locked out at about eight PM due to the amount of people going, being turned away, travelling there, et cetera. I think if we're inviting an organisation to set up a race meet on that day, we're pigeonholing, or potentially pigeonholing, holding, community members who live in Liverpool attending a, a New Year's Eve event, which is really for the community and we want people from Liverpool to be able to attend that. The residual effect of having an event like this on New Year's Eve means that some people just may not leave and that'll prohibit some people from the community not being able to attend. If it occurred this year without an event, it's an almost certainty to occur if we do invite them to have a race meet. There's no reason why it can't be any other day, it doesn't necessarily need to be on New Year's Eve, is my position on, on four.
Taking on board councillor Carnib's feedback, I'm happy to, if councillor Restevsky also agrees, to end the point four at a racecourse. So you get rid of in conjunction with council's New Year's Eve event. If we have the event, then, well, we can consider the logistics perhaps of, of doing that, should Racing New South Wales add a meeting on the calendar for New Year's Eve. And then if not, we go ahead, provided that we have, still have an agreement with the ATC to have our New Year's Eve event without the meeting.
Yeah, I think if we just remove point four and leave it as, and we move from there. But I'll, I'll just, before I get to deputy mayor, if I can, just refer those comments to the eight o'clock on New Year's Eve, because I was outside the gate myself. And the deputy mayor and I, once again, spoke about that, but I'll refer to the CEO.
Thank you. Through the chair, nice segue. One week after New Year's Eve, we did a lessons learned on the success of New Year's Eve and the residual implications of its relative success, given the weather. It was very well attended. We, the issues of ticketing, the issues of scale, the issues of numbers, the issues of the, the adjacencies of where the stage was to where people could see the fireworks from. And we went over a lot of things. I've got to congratulate the staff by having a very, there were no council officers at director or above at the, at the New Year's Eve event. Something we'll probably rectify, but what the staff did, based on the best information of security and police, is make some decisions around safety. based on the best information of security and police, has made some decisions around safety. But we were actually the victims of our success in that it was a fantastic event. And what we've done in that lessons learned, if we've recorded those lessons learned and we put in a number of actions to make sure, and we think it's the right location, that logistically we make better improvements this year and have a much bigger event where nobody's turned away, the gates are open and we're all safe.
And you should, we should just flag that a ticketed event would help with providing accuracy on numbers and with safety and prevent maybe something like this from happening. And if you're doing a ticketed event, then you might want to do what Fairfield does and charge like five bucks. So that way people actually commit to it versus just booking and not coming. That's another discussion for another time. Deputy mayor?
Yes, I did attend that and obviously I spoke to you about it afterwards. I think it was one of the best events we've had. I don't think the races work. I have a son-in-law who trains racehorses and I can tell you, he was there and he wouldn't have liked the noise that occurred there. And actually, that's my only criticism of the whole thing. I hate noise. And the decibel noise there, I measured it. It was 95 decibels. Now, that may not mean very much, but that's the onset of pain. And so what I think we need to do is be more careful when we do these. I think we should in fact ask these people who play the music, particularly the bass music. You wouldn't get a horse anywhere near there with that bass music that was playing like that. But as I say, it was good. I think you had too many musical events competing with each other. If you were in the middle of any one of those, it was difficult for you to hear one or the other. So personally, I think you had a, there was one of those racy car things, those electric car things. They had their own P A system and that was competing with the main one. And I thought it was just, the noise was so, it was thumping my chest. And now, look, I've complained about this before. We have a lot of council functions where I believe the noise level exceeds the state regulations. And I think we need to be a little bit more mindful of that. But overall, I thought it was a great event. I didn't stick around for the fireworks because we were looking after dogs ourselves and, you know, the noise from that affects them. But look, overall, I think it was a great event and the people there, I congratulate them for what they did. It was good.
We've got councillor AJ, councillor Conib, then councillor Hart.
Yes, I was there with deputy mayor. I think is the new techno music, the boom, boom, boom in the middle. It was, it was, no, no, just the boom, boom, boom. Yeah, it was too much, too much. So if, and they just put it right where the people are. So, and you forgot about the other thing that people were complaining, coffee. There was not enough coffee with these people. Like I have to line up for half an hour for just coffee. That wasn't cool. And also variety of food. We need to bring some different culture food. It was just too many one beggar and all that steak. Bring some African dishes there too, yeah. Thank you.
councillor Conib?
Look, I apologise to all councillors for taking us down this boom, boom segue. That was my intention. If I can just say, just your point about ticketed event, because look, this, I think, once we remove point four from this motion, it's probably good to go. Just on your point about a ticketed event, it's not necessarily the case that we want to charge the community members. The other problem you've got is because, as the acting C E O said, those types of events are such a success because other councils don't necessarily hold them. So you've got Liverpool, but then you've got, you know, people from George's Hall and outside of Liverpool, but close enough, still attend because they want to watch fireworks and they don't want to go to Brighton and Lassens, for example, or anywhere else. So that's the other issue that needs to be considered. That of course, we want people who live in Liverpool, because we're funding it, to be able to attend because they pay rates here and we're here to service them. So if we do ever consider a ticketed event, I think it should be ticketed at no cost for people who live here. And it's not that I wouldn't necessarily want to charge outsiders. We don't want to charge nobody, but it's about prioritising the people in Liverpool. But I, look, I think we've gone deep down this segue. It's probably best we put this motion without number four. I know councillor Hart's got to say something, but perhaps after.
Hopefully on the home straight after this comment.
All I was going to say, deputy mayor, I've promised you the next time we tend an event together, I'll bring earplugs because I hate the noise as well and I'm much younger than you. I'm not sure, I'm happy to defer to councillor Restevsky on this. I still don't, I don't really see a problem with point four because it's not qualified by whether we have an event at Warwick Farm. I think, I still think it'd be great if Racing New South Wales did hold a meeting at Warwick Farm Racecourse on New Year's Eve because I think it'll be well patronised. Even on Warwick Farm Wednesday, it's still a pretty good atmosphere. And New Year's Eve, I think, would make it even better. So I'm happy to defer to councillor Restevsky as to whether you want to remove it or not.
It could be like the Liverpool Everest, you know?
Yeah, let's just move it and get to a vote. We've got plenty of other motions.
No worries.
The Mount Pritchard?
Mount Pritchard? Okay, I think we've had enough discussion. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare unanimous. Next item is norm 09, page 170, tab 21, with the recommendation of page 100.
I just have an amendment to my motion. Remove point number five. And under point number nine, if we can remove the thing about three councillors and insert the names councillors Haal, Conib and Restevsky. And where they meet every month at six P M., so if we can put the time at six P M. And the last, and the last point, the meeting is open to the public.
Does this now? Is it become in that format a committee? Yeah. Just thinking from my governance point of view. Yes, you know, opening it to the public and there's going to be rules and.
Oh, look, I sought the Oxford Dictionary definition of rubbish before, so I'll refer to the general counsel. But whether he can make a comment, whether it forms a committee in that sense at point nine? And whether we need then to establish a charter? And I agree, it's a reasonable scenario, but whether we need to establish a charter, et cetera.
Can I just, before he does answer, to give him maybe some more time to contemplate, that the changes that the Minister for Law Government is proposing regarding briefing sessions and things made in the public, well, I guess this ticks that box. But I think the objective was to have things more in committee. Therefore, they officially are done in a consistent fashion. Anyway.
So in general, there are two types of committee that council can establish. One where it has functions, that council delegates its functions. And the other is advisory committees that try to assist the council in how it discharges its functions. I'm not really clear what this one is, to be honest. It talks about meeting and addressing issues.
I'm happy to give a bit of a background, maybe that might help. It's probably one of the most important issues facing our community at the moment. We've had, got another motion in relation to this and the deputy mayor was speaking, with someone in the public forum. Obviously, our city's not clean and we're constantly chasing our tails to keep up with the lack of resources. Now, in the last month, I've probably given the council support staff over 200 requests involving rubbish. And they've done a fantastic job and I feel sorry for them because I know they're under-resourced. But that's coming from the, from the public, it's not coming because I want to bombard them. Now, obviously, that's not sustainable. We can't be doing that every month. Now, the reason why this task force is a, is a key component to the motion is to ensure that we develop strategies to stay on top of this problem. And that's why it's important that we also include the union because they're, you know, they're involved with the workforce and we have the director involved. And also we have the public involved so they can have a monthly grievance where they can come and talk to us about these issues. Now, I mean, we do have a lack of resources. And if I look at, I was looking at Blacktown Council, they have eight clean-up trucks and we've got five. So obviously, we've got, in my personal opinion, jobs in the wrong places. We need to be focusing on this and the task force will probably address a lot of this. Now, in relation to the shopping trolleys that the deputy mayor talked about, we probably need a retail education and much larger fines to fix that problem. Now, a lot of the major retailers like Coles and Woolies have gone in-house, as we all know, with their services. And they don't have the proper experience and equipment to collect their trolleys properly. So they're leaving it to us. Now, retailers will probably argue, yes, they're bringing jobs and money and whatnot. But the argument there should be that trolleys are causing major obstruction, damage to our property and to our footpaths and an ice all to the community. Furthermore, they clog up the waterways with our natural, with our natural environment by introducing galvanised metals and plastic to pollute these areas. Now, if we have a task force where we can meet and, you know, brainstorm these sessions, we can develop a collection plan that the council then could submit to retailers. And that's, that's some of the things that this task force, I don't know what you want to call it, but it's more of a monthly brainstorming session because the public are crying out for this and we need to give them an opportunity to voice this. And that's, that was the whole point. So I don't know if that makes any difference to the definition.
So.
Did you want to respond?
An advisory committee? I think what we would normally do when council wants to establish a committee is to go away and prepare some sort of charter for it and bring it back for you to consider it.
So I think I understand the sentiment of your motion, councillor Restevsky, and agree with its sentiments. And the, the easiest way is to achieve this. Firstly, you've got to make sure it's non-operational, right? And there is definitely an operational feel to this. However, you mentioned things about under-resourced and strategies. And then probably what should be added to that is service level agreements. And that's why I guess our role as councillors, so I guess if we were to set what level of service we provide to our community? And then do we have enough resources to deliver on that service level? And where do we get the funding in the budget process to do that? Right? So I think that's what we want to do. The simplest way to do it is if you add this on to the governance committee whilst we're there on a monthly basis, that we have, we, you know, obviously something has to be done. And that's where I guess good time can be allocated to be able to deal with that. Alternatively, I think the framework would then be to establish a committee to do so. councillor Conib?
Yeah, look, I think the, an advisory committee in terms of its structure would probably be the most appropriate. Sounds like it's on. There's always been an issue with my mic. Oh, there we go. The flicker's on and off. Yeah. Yeah, too powerful councillor AJ, that's what it is. No, look, I think the intent of an advisory committee is important because, look, we were discussing the earlier issues surrounding, you know, trolleys and the reality of, it may or may not constitute rubbish. It certainly constitute ownership of those trolleys by those certain organisations, being Woods and Coles. And perhaps this advisory committee would be able to take some advice from the community around exactly where they occur, what are the hotspots? Perhaps we can consider with the community's input in mind, exactly what types of mechanisms we can put in place in terms of oversight. So I think an advisory committee is good. I think, look, one of our main functions as councillors is to ensure the cleanliness of our city. And I think what better way to do that than setting up an advisory committee where community members can actually attend? I would be happy to be on a committee like this, to be able to listen to what people have, where the hotspots are. And then it's on us to be able to report back to council and council staff and just say, look, this is what we've heard, what can be done about it, et cetera, et cetera. As opposed to it necessarily being operational. Because of course, you know, constituents will contact about certain rubbish and there has been an influx of that as of late. And I think the speaker earlier, who really went into detail about, you know, the photographs of that stuff really is not on. And we've got a duty to be able to see if there's ways we can improve our city so then we don't see photos like that. Because, you know, it's quite embarrassing really. And we're doing everything we can, but this is something we can do better to at least hear from the community on a more frequent basis to be able to stay on top of the issue. So it doesn't amalgamate to something massive.
Then, for the sake of time, then the motion should read that council directs the C E O to prepare a charter for a committee that would deal with the city presentation and maintenance. And refer back to the booklet, page of its contents. I think they get it, I think the spirit, but that would be the simplest way in one liner to get it done.
Mr Mayor, can I draw everyone's attention to point six? How would that work?
No, I think disregard that. Ultimately, you've got to get the right framework. And we're saying is the framework is, yeah, establish a committee, bring us back a charter. It'll take them a couple of months to get here and then that's how we go from there. In the meanwhile, we can, anyone can ask that it be brought into the governance committee to have discussions for the urgency of the situation, which is very urgent, that we can have discussions in the meanwhile there. Anyone can just do for that. And so, yeah. Okay, as a mover, happy with that?
So the motion is the bottom one, is that correct? Okay.
That would achieve what you want to do and give you a framework that does it.
Okay, I'm just going to work that a little bit more. Directs the C E O to prepare a charter for a committee by including the points above.
Yep.
And I also want to be known that this committee is open to the public. So the governance meeting is not open to the public. So this is imperative that it's open to the public.
Yeah. All right, is secondary happy with that?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, though, if we're saying by including the points above and we still have point six in there, that doesn't.
It's for the spirit of drafting, for understanding. Either way, it all, either way, it all has to come back to us.
Okay.
But it gives a, yeah. Yeah, yeah. All right, any further discussion? I'll put the motion, do we have a move in our secondary? Is that clear up there? Yep. No worries. All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Just with regards to norm 10, page 173. Councillors, this, how could you put it? There are, if you refer to other documents that council has adopted, and if you read the first sentence, there may be inconsistencies with that. And I urge councillors to think about that. Because in my opinion, that first sentence has implications and should not make it into print.
I'll give you a bit of a background why I moved this motion. There was a lot of fact checking recently on Facebook. And I've never seen it before where they were fact checking, and I won't mention names, or fact checking things written by a particular councillor. Obviously, the fact checking was in the mayor's benefit. I wouldn't have minded if he wrote the fact checking on.
Yes, councillor Hart, what's your point?
By saying it's in the mayor's benefit, if the, the comments that were made by this certain councillor, was it the detriment of the organisation, not just the mayor and the governing body, the rest of the governing body?
Okay.
I would strongly, I uphold that and I would strongly advise council that this is probably something you'd want to have a discussion in closed session. I do not feel comfortable in putting this forward to the floor of council as a chair of this meeting because of what it implies inside of it, not only to myself personally, but also to staff. So this is not an appropriate motion to be discussing in public. If you want to go into closed session, because it is dealing with staff, you'd have to go under the relevant section of the Act that deals with staff regarding that.
No names will be mentioned. I prefer that we have transparency in our discussions and we'll be very careful on not naming any particular individuals, which I don't intend to do that.
Yeah.
Now, going back to my point...
All right, well, all due respect, I'm gonna, I will not participate in this debate. I'll hand over to the deputy mayor. If you believe this should be done in public, in its fashion, I appear so. But I do know, I have the code of meeting practice here, but the code of conduct, I don't have it in front of me. But, no, is it here? Do we have the code of, because I'll leave that here in front of you to read. Maybe I should just have a chat with you for a moment before. Excuse us for a moment.
Or seconded?
Yeah, look, from my inexperienced point of view, I will ask you as councillors, do you want to debate this issue or do you not? So I'll ask for a show of hands. Sorry? Yes, a mover and a secondor to debate the issue and then decide what you want to do. So anybody?
I've moved the motion.
Secondor? As on the screen.
I don't believe there's a secondor, deputy mayor.
And that means it lapses. I will call on the mayor to chair the meeting. Thank you very much for putting precarious position.
May I make a comment to the acting CEO just on that point? Can we make sure that matters... Sorry. Sorry, sorry, deputy mayor. I just wanted to make a comment just on that motion in question. A councillor raised that he explored avenues regarding his motion, of which he got to the point where he felt the need to move a motion on the floor of council. Can we ensure for best practice that if these concerns are ever raised again, that this is explored through a code of conduct process and all councils are perhaps trained in or informed on the code of conduct process? I know there's a report coming up and we can explore it further there. But I think if the councillor in question, if councillor Restevsky had felt like he had to move this motion, it should have been dealt with through a code of conduct complaint.
Thank you. I'm suggesting that we have a five-minute break.
Could I quickly just say something? And I respect what you said councillor Hart. It's a serious thing to move, you know, something against an individual like that. So I wanted to try and avoid that. I don't like doing those sort of things.
Thank you councillor. I suggest we have a five-minute break. Thank you.
Item is NOM 11, page 182. Tab 23, recommendation on page 182. Move councillor Green, secondor councillor Monahan, any discussion? Yes. Microphone please.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. Thank you for staff, for the information that they've provided. I'd just like to add that the issue of food insecurity is actually much broader than homelessness. And we're looking at poverty, disadvantage, low wages, people on low wages are working poor. I mean, there are far more community groups, churches and organisations that are working in providing meals and food than the list that we have at the moment. And that is why I wanted to bring a rather round table or seminar, bring together the experts for a proper scoping project to understand not only the extent of food insecurity in our LGA, but also the drivers of it and understand the patterns. And particularly, that kind of information will help for the number of areas. And one might be just even in looking at what, how resourced is our NGO and our welfare sector. So I would urge my fellow councillors to support this motion.
If I can, sorry.
Councillor Monahan?
I just want to very quickly speak for this motion. It's a very important motion. I thank Dr Green for bringing it to the floor. I think that this initial study into food insecurity will, as discussed, you know, open up a lot more information that we will also be able to gather. There is a lot more going on in our community in this cost of living crisis and things like that that we will uncover through starting to scratch the surface with food insecurity. So I'm really pleased to be able to be, you know, supportive of this. I think it's going to inform a lot of decisions we make going forward.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just quickly say that back my first time as mayor, there was a lot of work that was done in not exactly this, but there's a lot of organisations, big charitable foundations that have money and then this kind of did actually help connect them together. So, yeah.
To that, that's a really important point because there may very well be referral pathways that not all organisations and groups that are providing food actually know exist. So that then would provide better support to the people who are accessing food security. And also, you know, in terms of, you know, there may very well be families out in our community who go around to different places to, you know, for that very reason because their access to food is so insecure. So I think it'd be a worthwhile thing to do. And I understand, this is an issue well beyond council, but I do believe that council has a coordinating role here.
Indeed. All right, is any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is NOM 12, page 188, tab 24, recommendation on page 188.
I'd like to move that way.
I'd like to second it. Moves seconded councillor Monahan.
With the indulgence of the mover and secondor, can I please add a third, a point C to the motion? Which would be that we also included in this review would be statistics around the uptake of council's household clean-up service and whether or not, in that investigation, whether or not there's a better way for us to offer that service to the general public.
Can I?
Why I'm wanting to look at illegal dumping, we know it is a big problem. We understand that. We see it when we're driving around Liverpool all over the place. But to understand what is being, the household items that are being dumped, that are being left, why are they being left? And, you know, there may be opportunities to, in terms of a circular economy. You know, furniture can be difficult to get rid of or dispose of, I should say. So that, you know, there could be, you know, for recycling leather, whatever. So there are opportunities. So this is an opportunity to get all the ideas out on the table and that whatever responses that we are looking at are informed by the data and, you know, to be able to inform solutions.
We had a very good programme with Yada that we were working on, but kind of didn't work anymore, but we'll leave it to them. Can I recommend that in point two, that we add the word regularly? So we can say we get regularly provided with this information?
Oh, yes. Yes.
So we report to be regularly provided for presentation beginning at the April governance meeting. Yeah, that's cool. Okay, secondor happy?
So I might change the word, general public, sorry, general public to... I just, obviously, I mean the people of the Liverpool LGA. I just don't want that to be misinterpreted. And I know I said general public, but to the, you know, Liverpool LGA.
Instead of report regularly, why don't we specify either quarterly or monthly so that we can keep on top of the problem rather than regularly, just seems a bit...
Yeah, I'd change it to monthly then. Helps keep idea with, understand what's going on. Count, deputy mayor?
I was going to suggest that we also include this in the annual report. I'm not sure if it is. You know, in the annual report, we include how much do we pick up? One of the things that, for instance, council, I believe, currently has about 140 rubbish pickups a week. I think that's roughly right. Residents, when you say that to them, 140 a week, you've got to be joking. But that's true. It's a lot. And I think that information needs to go out there. But I would have thought quarterly is fine, but included in the annual report, which it isn't at the moment, or I don't think it is.
Yeah, and the other thing is I'd say, one thing on this point is we need to understand whether we're allocating enough resources for this. All right, if there's not further discussion, I will put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is NOM 13, page 190, tab 25, with recommendation on page 190.
I move as per the book.
Moved councillor Restevsky, secondor councillor Carney. I'm just looking at point three. Point three, once again, looking what the director of corporate support mentioned earlier about budgeting. Can you please find us with some...
I would suggest through the general manager, I would suggest councillors that you may commence the sentence with refer all that list to the budget review in May.
So I refer this funding for upcoming budget process. Was that it?
So delete to prioritise and just put in refer, sorry, consider.
Where's the prioritise? Oh, yeah, that's prioritise. Cool. All right, is any further discussion?
Including, yeah, and that's it.
No worries. All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it unanimous. Next item is NOM 14, page 192, with recommendation on page 193.
Just have a slight amendment to point number two. We can change the wording to redirect these savings of 68310 from this reduction into frontline services in the form of directly employed council staff, particularly focusing on maintaining and enhancing the cleanliness of our city.
Do you have a second for your motion? Secondor councillor Carney. I guess I, once again, this is a budget thing. No, I'm sorry, budget thing, excuse me. It's a budget amendment. What's going, is this not, I'll refer, sorry. Late at night, my words are flowing.
If it's in relation to this year, that's not a problem. You can resolve that now.
Yeah. So is there, director of city futures has a comment if I refer to the CEO, through the CEO?
Through the CEO, thank you, Mr Mayor. But just draw attention councillors to the CEO's comments on page 193. And we've observed there that this year, this financial year, we're only doing three additions. The summer edition just came out, you would have received that one. And we've started the planning on the autumn edition. We didn't do an addition around the election time. I think councillors appreciate why we didn't do that. And so, but the previous two additions took up more resources because there were more pages. So what I'm getting at is that in that managing our budget within our department, right? It's not a cut and half budget outcome. And it has, in fact, in that line item, that budget item has $29,573.50 left, which we are allocating to this next last edition for this financial year. That's what I'm getting at, there is not $68,000 in that budget. I also draw attention to the councillors, if they haven't, I assume they have read the comments about the EDN. I also draw attention to the councillors, if they haven't, I assume they have read the comments about the EDM, which is our electronic monthly newsletter, which is only 4,000 readers. The printed edition is 80,000 and the community groups and members of the public that read that are often those that are in socio-economic disadvantaged communities and also more senior citizens of our community. And that's facts. So I'll just leave that with you. So the
Yeah, so number two, number two doesn't actually, that number is not accurate, then the 68,000 is part of the motion. So you'd have to put that 29,000.
No, that's provisional, sorry.
Yep, sorry.
Sorry, through the chair, that would be provisional because if the director is saying that he has 29,500 left and councillor of understanding that we are going to print another version, that would expunge the $29,000 in this year's budget. So you get zero savings, or you don't have the version and you save the 29,000. That's the choice.
Can I please raise a concern? I just raised this concern. We no longer have local newspapers. So where our community would have information on, not only on council, on these meetings, the issues that are relevant and current, but also of our events. We, I, my own personal opinion, the assumption that everybody or a significant number of people or the majority consume via social media and whatever, I believe that also is flawed. We have a very high percentage in terms of digital poverty. And there are segments of our community, like the elderly, that are not on social media. And many people don't go on social media for the reason, whether it be Facebook, Instagram or whatever, because it's a toxic place. So I'm just raising it as a concern. I think this is misguided. In that it's important that people are able to have access to council information. And, you know, if you want to review it, I mean, what are you saving? 29,000, 60,000? I mean, seriously? Are we going to sit here and argue over that?
Look, I'm going to get back to you. So just before we go, councillor McNaul had her hand up, and councillor Green, the CEO, so what does that 68,000 actually get us as a frontline worker?
Sorry, through the chair, Mr Mayor, I can't talk to 68 because the number's wrong. We're talking about 29,000, 29,500 left in the director's budget. He's not getting a cent more. He either produces the version of this and all that money's gone, or you don't want the version and you keep the money. And 29,000 is a FTE at two days a week. If you want somebody, something different rather for your 30 grand.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to propose a foreshadowed motion, and I'm happy to speak to it and speak against this motion, is that we continue to produce and distribute the Liverpool Life Newsletter in its current frequency. If there's a second or I'll speak to it.
Seconded councillor Moon. And councillor Carnib seconded the original motion.
I agree wholeheartedly with what councillor Green was saying. I think that, you know, yes, in recent years, people have turned to digital media more often or more readily. However, in my experience in our community over the last five years, it, this does not speak to everybody. We need print media to be going to our constituents. There is a lot of people who do not access anything online. The Liverpool Life Newsletter doesn't just talk about council services. It replaces a lot of those services that people got in their local newsletter, sorry, local newspaper delivery twice a week that we used to get not that long ago that I can still remember. So this information contained in it, in the last one that went out before Christmas, had, you know, Christmas can be a particularly distressing time of year for people. And this allowed people to know, knowledge of where to access services over Christmas time. It had information on how to deal with heat stress in the middle of summer. This is the kind of stuff that I might access online, but I certainly know there is a huge amount of people in my community who do not access this online. Whether that be that they don't have the means to do that financially, or they don't have the desire to have a digital footprint. We continue to mail out, in the elections, we mailed out letters to people. So clearly, we think that mail media gets to people. So I would suggest that we continue to provide this service to our community to cover the people who would not get this if they didn't get it in their letterbox. They wouldn't get this information.
Councillor Carnib?
Yeah, look, I'll just speak on the initial motion that I've seconded against the foreshadowed motion. And it's, it's not a matter of, for me, whether or not it's required. It's clearly required. There's clearly a need for a touch point to the community. There was obviously a discretionary decision to reduce it from what I understand from four to three in any event. It's much of muchness, whether the community gets it once per year in the form of an annual report, twice per year in terms of a a half yearly report or a full yearly report, or in terms of the newsletter, it being the fact that it covers either a seasonal, seasonal update being, you know, autumn, winter, summer, spring, or just half yearly updates. If there is a saving to council as a result, then I back the saving. I don't think that four or three or, no numerical number will inform the update's newsletter's usefulness. It will be out to the community in a frequency. It's just a matter of whether or not it's required to be four, three or two. So I say that the reduction to two is appropriate.
Councillor McNaul?
And please, through the chair, to the relevant director, I mean, we must have some statistics around the amount of people who access, who don't access digital and who access maybe through our customer service. We have some kind of tally on, you know, the reach that we get through print media.
I'm not sure we have that clarity in detail from a demographic, but we certainly have a look at it. To councillor Carnib's point, that if the council was seeking to proceed with point one, there's the reduction of the frequency then expunges point two. So you're not getting any savings because of the scenario. So the motion is really around point one, a reduction in the amount of times we do it per year. And then we will see a residual saving in the next year's budget because, again, you just have a choice today about letting the next version go out and making the resolution from there on.
Yes, so my point was, we find ourselves in a very precarious position. Council's not in the media business of doing newsletters. We've had people here speaking about rubbish. Every dollar counts. So I will scrutinise even a dollar, like we had a debate over $30 before. This is a lot more than that. The community wants savings. They want us to tighten our belt first. There's media reports, I think North Sydney Council's meeting this week to look at raising their rates by 101% or whatever it is. Every dollar counts. And I will stand on this motion that we need to save where we can. Now, I could have removed it, but I didn't. That's why I'm trying to be fair and trying to say twice a year is enough. We've got digital media. Us councillors should be out there talking to the community. I get 200, 300 requests a month. We're the media. That's what we get paid for.
I just want to make a comment. Councillor Restevsky, I note everything that you've said. But I do, I do want to raise the point that you said that went on the business of communication. Well, I disagree with that. I think we're in the business of informing the community of things that we do as an organisation, especially as councillor Dr Green and councillor McNaul mentioned, to the people that don't have an online footprint, people that don't have the ability to access information online easily. And people that want to try and stay away from politics on social media, which I'm well aware that is quite prevalent on Facebook at the moment, local politics. So I think we should all be supporting the foreshadowed motion because we need to make sure we're communicating. I'm pretty sure it's somewhere in the act that we have to communicate with our residents to ensure we're fulfilling all of our obligations.
Look, I just want to say on that point, we are communicating with them. We're going to be doing it twice a year. We've got community forums once a month. There's plenty of communication there. We need to look at savings. The community wants the streets cleaned. Redirecting a dollar or half a person, it doesn't matter. It gets the job done.
So just so I can get some understanding of the two sides of this discussion. So councillor Restevsky, you're saying that we are the media, we're the ones who are communicating with people? So did you post today saying that we should not be spending millions of dollars on eight media advisers to the Liberal mayor?
Oh, we're going to have this discussion, are we?
No, I'm just wondering. You're using as an example.
Are we going to have this discussion? I mean.
You don't have to answer the question if you don't want to.
No, I'm happy to, but you walked out before because you didn't want to have this discussion. Happy to go, but I don't think the other councillors want to be spending time on that. I'm happy to do it. But I'm respecting their time. I'm respecting their time, and you should do the same because you've called about three breaks. You should have gone all the way through. We all want to be home to our families. It's 10 past 10, we're on Nom 14.
You could have just answered yes or no, councillor.
It doesn't require a yes or no. With you, you're very, you're like this, you know?
Yes, councillor Moon, what's your point of order? Mike. We are all grown men and women. Okay? If we're going to continue heading in the way that other councillors are behaving in this room, we should all hang our heads in shame. Okay? We're not little kids. No, no, don't point anywhere else. I'm looking at you. No, I don't need to look at you. Thank you, thank you, councillors. Your point of order is upheld. We're having a discussion now about removing a form of communication with our residents from a print product. Now, my recollection is that 20% of our community is over the age of 65 or 70 approximately. Give or take a little bit, obviously that changes. And that community generally is not as well as digitally connected. You then made the comment with regards to then, you know, the councillors are the media, the council's the one who's communicating. So I just wanted to get clarification. If that was, once again, the question is, did you post that? That's all I'm asking for, is whether you post that. Because if you did post that, then I would actually then look at, well, is that actually a factual number? Because I don't know where these eight media advisers are to the mayor. And then you get down to the question of saying, well, hold on, if now we pull back a formal communication channel that's made by Liverpool City Council, that has particular systems, procedures and a framework around it, to councillors just saying, under what framework? Because I'm looking, I just want that clarity. So ultimately, if council's not communicating, you want to communicate, fine. But I just, I think people deserve to have some facts. So that was my question, whether you posted that or not. I don't understand where there's an issue. Why wouldn't we want to tell people what Liverpool council is doing, what's going on? I don't understand how that's a, pardon? Yeah, thank you. I'm, and I'm speaking, right? Yeah, I'm chairing the meeting, councillor. Are you chairing the meeting? You're not chairing the meeting. I'm chairing the meeting. That's, yeah, great. And you resolved to have meetings at night time? That's great. Yeah, well, sorry, we have work, health and safety responsibility to everybody in this chamber and to the staff. People deserve to go on toilet breaks. People deserve, and people need to be fresh in making decisions. You don't, thank you, councillor. I chair this meeting. I believe people deserve to have comfort breaks, right? That's how it works here, right? Councillor, I will go, I'm not even going to bother with the response. So, yes. And once again, I'm struggling to understand why people wouldn't want to communicate with residents. I think, is there something else behind this? Am I missing it? I just don't understand. I don't understand this is the case. What's going, what's going on? Maybe councillor Carnib, maybe as you have your microphone, maybe you can shed some light on it?
Yes. Just to be clear, my position has not been not to communicate with residents. We've communicated with them four times per year. That's been discretionally reduced to three. My position is that two is sufficient. It's not to cease communication or that's just my position. I don't wish to comment any further. I think there's been good debate about it. My position is that just the motion be put.
All right, he's moved that the motion be put. I think there's been plenty of discussion. So we'll deal with the motion first, with the motion first. If the motion does not succeed, then you can have a chance to speak at the foreshadowed motion, councillor. Yeah, so first, yeah, 68,000 is not the correct number.
You can't.
So that number has to change. All right, and and once again, I don't know, how do you hire someone to for point two days? Is that motion, is point two now workable, CEO?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right. Would you like to write a reply, councillor Restevsky?
Not at 10.15. I think we've got other items we need to discuss. Let's put it to a vote and move on.
Great. You can say no next time, if you want to speed up time. I know, we'll put the motion as moved by councillor Restevsky. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare the motion lost. Well, now we'll deal with the You need more people to stand up for a division.
Division.
Division. All those in favour, please stand. Think those against? Declare the motion lost. Yep, thank you. Well, now we'll deal with the foreshadowed motion. If you feel the need to communicate, speak to councillor Moon, or if not, we'll just go ahead. Put the motion, or all those in favour of the foreshadowed motion, please raise your hand. Is that up? Yep. Against? Declare the motion carried. Next item is, let's go back into the agenda now, or let's start the agenda. Actually, what time is it? 10.15. Yeah, well, the first thing we need to deal with is the mayoral minute regarding the acting CEO performance review. We don't necessarily need to close unless people want to discuss it. But this is bearing in mind that the guidelines, that bringing this report to council is not another review.
I'm happy to move that we just accept the report.
What's, as a mayoral, as a mayoral minute, there's no need for, I'm officially moving.
I've got some questions. I want to discuss some points in there. We don't need to go into closed, but I want to ask some questions.
Yep, and just bearing in mind of the guidelines from the OLG regarding this, I just.
I'm not moving a motion, I'm asking a question.
Yes, but the report of the performance panel is not to have another, when it comes to councils, not to rehash what was discussed within the panel.
A question, I'm entitled to ask a question.
You are entitled to ask a question, as long as you're not acting like, as long as it's in line with the OLG guidelines. What's your question, councillor?
There is mention in there about, excuse me, a staff satisfaction survey. Has this been done? And if so, how many people responded? And as councillors, do we get to see a copy of that?
Refer that to the CEO.
Thank you. Through the chair, sorry councillor, can you refer me to where that is?
I think it's on the front page, customer service.
I'll thank you councillor Monahan. It says, a staff satisfaction I was thinking councillor Monahan, it says a staff satisfaction survey to be developed by December twenty four. So that, my understanding is the development of the staff survey has been done. Whether the staff has been surveyed, whether that survey has been released, it has not been done. So the, I think the KPI was a residual from Mr Ajarka's that he had to develop the survey. And I think the team worked to develop that survey and a concept, but I don't think it was ever presented.
There's also mention here of twenty code of conducts, but in one of the reports here, it only talks about five.
Sorry, the twenty plus code of conducts was something that I noted to the assessment team, which is factual. The five, could you take me to that?
In corp zero one.
In corp, by today's meeting.
That was until September or from August.
Yeah, so the twenty refers, thank you, the twenty refers to my tenure. So these, this was including in a list of sixteen items that I dealt with under the period of review. So there's going to be a timing anomaly there.
There was some mention of two hundred and forty plus letters with the United Services Union. The numbers I've looked into, in twenty twenty two, there was three hundred and twenty five, in twenty twenty three, there was a hundred and seventeen. Now we're up at two seventy five, so that's quite a big increase. Have we got provisions in place to manage this number?
Yes. So there's been a significant decrease in the number of letters from the United Services Union in the tenure. You have to take the two hundred and forty plus in the context of the environment which we're in, which was an election period. The sacking of the incumbent, who was a union member, and a number of other. If you look at point five, a number of other issues, well, you can look at all the points and they all had industrial implications and that's where the load was. We were at one, almost one to two a day there for two to three months.
Just my final question, you talk about fifteen matters before the Industrial Relations Commission, but I believe under your tenure, it's actually only been six, so you've put more than you probably should have.
In the tenure, fifteen plus matters went before the Industrial Relations Commission. Whether they were, whether there were six now residually, it's not six, I think there's one or two at the moment before the IRC, but that was my best number at the time. So I asked the director of, sorry, the head of people, how many we had during the period, he gave me that number.
Okay, it's not that important, but finally, I actually think you're doing a good job, so keep it up.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, I'll put the mayoral minute, all those in favour. Against, declare unanimously. So we'll now move on to our page fifteen of the agenda.
I'm happy to move that way with the one.
Plan zero one.
Change, sorry, just speeding things up, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yep, not worries.
I'm happy to endorse the recommendation. However, in some, you know, discussions I've had with community and things, there was a bit of worry that the name Holsworthy might cause some confusion, being that there is a suburb of Holsworthy close by. So perhaps that we could recommend all but Holsworthy, just to save confusion.
I've got a second, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare that carried. Next item is plan zero two, page twenty one, with the recommendation on page twenty one.
Quick question, the streets are named after girl guides. Has any thought been into naming the streets after maybe previous landowners who have lived in the suburb for, say, forty years plus? Has that ever been considered or?
I refer to the CEO.
Thank you, through the chair, the director of planning and compliance.
Through the acting CEO, I'll have to take on notice whether we've considered a theme of former landowners for this precinct. I'm going to say on face value that it's unlikely, we've done so. We typically do not as officers suggest a theme that's associated with former landowners unless there's a submission put forward. We could explore options in association with that and come back to you.
All right, do we have a mover of the motion? Move councillor McNair, second to councillor Green, any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Next unanimously, as was the other one, com zero one, page twenty five, tab three, with the recommendation on page twenty five.
I've just got a couple of questions.
Yeah, do we have move councillor Green, second to councillor McNair? Yes.
Page eight of the confidential, it's not very clear what we are actually funding. There's an amount there for venue, an amount there for three guest speakers, is that what we're actually funding or? Page eight of the attachment.
I refer to the CEO.
Seven. Sorry councillor, is this the seven thousand two hundred?
No, the first one, we're giving the organisation five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars.
I just can't follow what we are.
And then on page eight, the anomaly is the total requested was seven thousand two hundred and eighteen.
So where would the five thousand go towards? What would it go towards?
I'll just, I'll put it over to the director of community and lifestyle, seems to have a better idea than I do.
Thank you, through the CEO, it's just a portion of the funding. So if you see the breakdown, you've got the costs. So you know, the three speakers are costing fifteen hundred and then the venue's four thousand, but that's going over the threshold of the five thousand. But it'll be portionary to the whole spend. So the five thousand will go towards the total spend of the production.
And the other one, same question, page sixty nine. I could probably gather that we're funding the venue hire and the catering. Are we also funding the indigenous welcome to country, cake cutting? I don't know, we need to be a little bit more clearer in what we're actually funding. Because they can't allocate it to specific things based on the last meeting.
I guess councillor, the issue will be when they're part funded, let's say it's, we're providing five thousand and there's, it's a total cost of ten thousand. It's incumbent on the applicant, I guess, to describe what the expenditure will be used for. Whether our, whether any of our money went to the welcome to country, I guess it's, we don't know. It's just a five thousand dollars part of their total cost. I'm not sure how we can get that more explicit, but I'll refer the.
They'll come through, through the CEO, it'll come through an audit to report once they reconcile and bring it back to council from the spend. So we'll get that information. So all of this is portionary and then we get where they've actually allocated that funding, so you can get that information post.
We get that as well?
Council does, as part of the provision now, we haven't provided to councillors, but you, we can look into that.
I think it's important that we get it as well.
Again, we've got nothing to hide in that respect. Again, I just, I look at concepts like venue hire and think about how many good venues we got. So I mean, these are, these are questions.
I mean, these venues, I don't understand why they're not even opening their wallet. They make quite a lot of money and council is having to subsidise them. It'd be nice if we encouraged a lot of these events to do it at Casula Powerhouse or wherever. So we have that, you know, that term circular economy.
Can I just make a comment here, Mr Mayor, if I could? In my experience, working in the community sector for over thirty years, when you apply for a grant, you put in the budget, becomes part of the application that you put in. And then when you acquit it, you're then acquitting against the budget that you've presented. So, yeah, but I'm just saying, when you're asking, you know, so when the, when staff are assessing for the criteria and they're looking at what the essence of the project is, plus the budget that aligns with it.
Look, I think what you mentioned post, it'd be nice to have it in the report so we can actually see it in context. And I love this addendum stuff that you guys have introduced, it makes it a lot easier and thank you for that. Just a final one, how do we deal with this budget in there that's minus seven, six, seven, eight? Is that, we're in negative, how does this work? Because I couldn't figure that one out.
Through the CEO, that's, if you look at the total budget, we actually haven't, if I go to page, sorry, excuse me, the page twenty nine, if you look at the remaining balance, it's thirty one. So we estimate, so the total spend, so we actually haven't spent the allocation for the grants, for the total spend. So it's just that portionary where we've got more grant applications for that particular one, happens every year. It doesn't happen every year, but some years we get more community sponsorship, other days we get community grants. But as long as the balance is not in a deficit, then we're okay.
I still can't add it up, you've got thirty nine minus the seven plus the twenty five, how does it come to thirty one?
Well, I have to do the calculations, if the calculations wrong, that's an error of staff, so let me have a look at it. But I was just talking about the actual, the actual minus.
So the remaining balance looks like it's wrong.
Yeah, I think, I think for clarification, we'll do the numbers in a sec. But the thirty one, if the thirty one five was right, it's the aggregation of the three buckets. And if we've taken more from a bucket, we're seven wrong way on one bucket, the other two buckets will fix up the aggregated amount. The challenge will be whether we've got that number right, so we'll take that offline and let you know.
Is there any further discussion? Great, I will put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare it unanimous. Next item is corp zero one, page thirty one, tab four, recommendation on page thirty one, move councillor Green.
I'd like to move a motion.
Oh, yeah, councillor McNair, what's your motion?
I'd like to move the recommendation as per the book, but out of point three, please.
Yep.
And point three is direct the acting CEO to provide a report on whether the code of conduct complaint procedure can be amended to make a councillor personally liable for consistent and repeated breaches of the code of conduct.
Do you have a second there? Second to councillor Moon. Would you like to speak for your motion?
I would, I just want to note that I think this will encourage the best behaviour from all councillors. And I offer discretion to the acting CEO to report on perhaps giving us options on how we could potentially implement it and of course reviewing any legal considerations within the Local Government Act and whether it's permissible. But if we see or experience consistent breaches of the code of conduct, it should not be borne on the rate payer to pay for it. If code of conduct complaints referred externally, it could cost up to ten thousand dollars per code of conduct. And I think we heard just then, we've got twenty code of conducts, I'm not sure how many have been referred externally. But I assume for independence reasons, independent reasons, that a majority of them have been referred externally. And that is a major cost to rate payers. As I said, I think we can offer discretion to the acting CEO as to giving us options on how to implement it. Perhaps there's a minimum threshold of how many code of conduct complaints that need to be upheld against a councillor before this provision is triggered. But this will make sure, as I said, that we protect council's reputation by making sure that all councillors and staff for that fact are adhering to the code of conduct and providing perhaps an incentive to make sure that we adhere to it as much as possible.
Could we also make, I like your point, can we also make it retrospective and also make it apply to legal fees? Where if a councillor votes for legal fees, for example, taking the New South Wales government to court and they lose, we also make those councillors personally liable?
I think we, I think the CEO's comment, councillor Restefsky, is very clear. And do we, what was the status of that motion?
Councillor Restefsky asked that to be deferred.
Well, I think that motion was, the CEO's comment was very, very clear in that the Local Government Act has provisions for these types of things and decisions that are made by governing bodies in their capacity as a councillor.
So councillor Restefsky, on that point, the only way, because council just dealt with that matter, you'd have to rescind that motion to be able to deal with it again tonight.
I'll bring it up next month, but I'm happy to support it if we can put retrospective in there. Councillors retrospectively.
Yeah, you can, you can, I think the point is about asking the CEO to look into that and you can put in there to look into whether this can be applied retrospectively, right? And CEO.
Yeah, I don't mind the word retrospectively councillor, I just want to know what is the, how far do you want me to go back? That's the question.
The previous term.
I think, and as well, CEO, I think the whole point of this report is that you put options to us to see, first of all, whether we can do this and how we can implement it.
Thank, can I just?
Comment please?
Yes.
I would really like us all just to take a moment and to reflect on it. This is a very acrimonious path to be going down. We are supposed to be working as a collegial team. It's in, that's led by legislation and it's in our code of conduct. We are supposed to be working cooperatively and collegically for the community. And I'm really sad to be, you know, even to be hearing and reading that point three. And I'm, I'm really sad that, you know, in fourth year, that we've taken this turn. And that's all I'm going to say about it, I'm very disappointed.
Thank you councillor Green. Councillor Kinni, you wanted to say something? Can the premier?
I was under the impression that the current looking at the code of conduct complaints by the Office of Local Government is subject to changes, major changes, particularly with the code of conducts being raised at councils and some of them are, you know, unnecessarily done. There are numerous ones raised and for frivolous reasons. And you could take this further, you know, if you're going to, if councillors misbehave, what about the ones that are alleging misconduct and it hasn't been? Do they get, do they have to pay for the costs? What I'm saying is we're opening up a real big can of worms here. Do we really want to go down that path? And I agree with councillor Green, I don't think this is a good idea. We should be above this.
I, my position is quite simple, I strongly urge the mover and the second to remove three entirely. I think we may as well just invite the Office of Local Government to come and watch this meeting. And it's, it's an embarrassment to suggest that this is, with respect, there was a motion before about social media that was abandoned and that was abandoned for a purpose. It was abandoned, it was, it didn't, it didn't get a. It was abandoned, it was, it didn't, it didn't get a second done, and it was abandoned. And the heart of that motion, I think the issue that you took with it, Mr Mayor, is because it was essentially, in effect, I think the way I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, but just, yes, what I will say is, there's a similarity in terms of the connotation of point three, and, and the specific, I don't think it takes a rocket scientist.
Can I just drop you for time? Can I recommend, as I once said, remove point three for the furthest purpose, so we can move on and try to get through the agenda in the next twenty two minutes, twenty one minutes? Yep. Okay, so it's removed, is everyone now happy with the, with the motion as is? Right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Where are we? Okay, corp zero two, page thirty six, tab five.
Happy to move.
Move councillor McNair, second to deputy mayor, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Next item is corp zero three, page forty six.
Can I move this one for the end, because I want to talk about it, but I don't want to delay all the other ones, so can we move this to the end?
Yep, move that, move to the end, all those in favour, second to deputy mayor, all those in favour, against, declare carried, move that to the end. Corp zero four, page one eleven, tab seven.
This is where the motion.
Yes, councillor Hart. We're on corp zero four, page one hundred and eleven. Pardon? One one one.
One one one.
What's your motion councillor?
I'd like to move that council one. Continue to provide quarterly reports to councillors for consideration in confidential session. And then a point two, that publicly, publicly report information that does not waive legal professional privilege.
So basically, we get the best of both worlds, there's the, for transparency reasons, it will be publicly reported on the council's website, and we still get the full details in confidential.
Moved councillor Hart, second to councillor Khaneeb. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Next item is city futures, oh one.
Sorry.
Page one one four.
Yes, so move the council not dissolve the intermodal precinct committee.
Yep, okay, you have a mover, do you have a second, or? Second to councillor Khaneeb, any discussion?
For shadowed motion?
Yes, together we have a foreshadowed motion, and which councillor Green will propose, and I will second.
To move the report be deferred and, and further report to the governance committee, be prepared to create a more comprehensive economic strategic development committee to consider these and other broader committee economic issues and opportunities for Liverpool.
Cool, so move councillor Green, second to councillor McNair, is that in writing somewhere? Huh? It's coming?
Have a chat with Mr Mallard.
Basically defer it, look at creating a more broader economic development committee.
A broader, so.
That looks at intermodal.
The intermodal would be the innovation precinct, Bradfield, the Aerotopia, so looking at the whole lot, the airport, it's a whole lot as an economic, more comprehensive and broader economic perspective.
Yeah, councillor Khaneeb, microphone please, councillor Green, microphone.
Oh, sorry.
I just don't see why that can't occur simultaneously without the disbandment of the intermodal committee, so in terms of the motion that I understand that councillor Monahan was moving, that I seconded, it essentially keeps the intermodal committee, I've got no issues with, we can add an amendment, we can add a point to our motion that basically suggests that improvements of the committee in any given aspect can go to the governance committee for discussion and report back to council as to its, as to its, as to its future direction, but I think in terms of its disbandment, if everyone is in agreeance to not go down that path, then that can be voted on today.
I'd like to speak for the foreshadowed motion.
Yes, please councillor.
Having been on the intermodal committee for many, many years now, as a community member and as a councillor, you know, we had some great presentations tonight, some very passionate presentations, one of the highlights was that the charter for the committee is not serving its purpose at this point. We, when I look at the intermodal and the opportunities that it brings to our LGA, it would be remiss of us not to look at other opportunities in, in conjunction with that, you know, we are the third, the third city of Sydney, we're an airport city, we're a logistics city, we have Bradfield coming online, we have a lot of major projects where we have the opportunity to bring this discussion broader and to lobby.
Sorry councillor McNair, I'm interrupt you, there's, we've got sixteen minutes, we have to get through some important things, can I just ask that we just defer this matter to the next council meeting?
Yes, I'm happy with that.
All right, cool.
Well, I'm happy to defer, but not to dissolve.
Just deferring the meeting, we're just deferring this, we're not doing, we don't want to do anything other than deferring it.
Deferring it in the interests of time is fine.
Yeah, okay, great, so we'll just move that we defer this, as per the mover and second, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Next item is operations zero one, page one twenty seven.
I'm happy to move.
Move councillor Monahan, second to councillor Hart, any discussion?
Yes, one, one question. I've got one question. Okay, in relation to the.
So I'm just going to cut you off, if you guys want to have, if this is an important thing, if you want to go through it in detail, I recommend we just defer this to the next meeting as well.
Okay, yeah, do that, yeah.
Okay, let this move, move that it be deferred from Monahan and Hart, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Committee for, sports committee meeting.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor McNair, second to councillor.
Quick, quick question, I remember the last meeting we had, I asked the question about the southwestern Sydney, why we're paying more than all the other councils, I seen that mention of that, is we've got a reason why we're paying more than everyone else?
That's, I'm sorry, is that a different committee?
No, I think this is just minutes of what was discussed in the meeting.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm trying to say, they're talking about the amounts in there, if you have a look at page one thirty eight, Liverpool's paying thirty two thousand, everyone else is in their twenties, I asked the question last council meeting, six weeks later, I still don't have an answer.
Gosh, well noticed, yeah, can, can CEO, can you just note that question and provide an answer, yeah, this week to the councillor? Yep. All right, moved and seconded, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Next item is committee zero two, addendum booklet four, for the governance meeting.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor McNair, second to councillor Green, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. We now move into the confidential items. I don't know, confidential item, rate modelling.
Can we defer, Mr Mayor, I've got a few, I want to flesh this out.
Move that it be deferred, councillor Hart, seconded, councillor McNair, any discussion? Put the matter, all those in favour, against, declare that carried. Next item is com zero two, page twenty eight. Move deputy mayor, second to councillor Monahan, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare that unanimous. Next item is com zero three, page thirty two.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor McNair, seconded.
Could we defer this, because it's a large amount, I don't want to debate it right now, it's.
Is it, is it, is it time sensitive? Huh, it's time sensitive?
Look, yeah, I think that, we've got some questions out of that.
Yeah, let's. Yeah, yeah, we can go, we go for it, let's, let's deal with it then, we've got time, go for your questions. Are the, subject to what the questions are?
I, I, yeah.
Yep, all right, cool, so let's just jump to com four then, sorry, moved, page thirty six, move councillor Monahan, second to councillor Khaneeb, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. So all I can see then, we have two matters left on the agenda, which is com zero three, and, and, and. Operation, corp zero three.
And op one.
Corp zero three, no, op one, no, op, no, op one is deferred.
Also, Edmonton Avenue?
Yeah, let's defer it to next meeting. No, that's just a report, no, okay, so we have two items left. So with this one, this is the time TPG, the time sensitive matter, so a councillor's wanting to move into closed session.
If it'll make discussions about it easier, given our.
Yes, so do you want to move that we go on?
Confidential things in public.
Yep, move that, so councillor Monahan, you're moving that we move into closed section under, under section.
Ten two, whatever the section is.
Under section, section. Section ten A two D I of the Act, because it contains commercial information of a confidential agent that would if disclosed prejudice to commercial position of the person who supplied it. Move councillor Monahan, second to councillor. Sorry, it was councillor Hart, and I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. So thank you everyone, while we're in closed session, council resolve that approvals for the purpose of tenure requirements on the section five point three, sorry, section five five three I of the law government act nineteen ninety three, that engagement of TPG Telecom Limited for up to twenty four months, as a satisfactory result would not be achieved by inviting tenants because of the following extenuating circumstances, TPG Telecom is currently providing internet and data services to council, pursuing a short term contract with a new vendor would likely result in substantial implementation costs, if the contract is not extended with the current provider, there may be operational disruption for the business, to authorize a CEO or delegate to execute all documents necessary to give effect to those resolutions, on being put, the motion was carried unanimously. Thank you. So now we go back to item corp zero three, page forty six.
Can I move that we move to defer this, because we've only got five minutes and it's quite an important item, it shouldn't be rushed to the next meeting?
Yep, move that it be deferred, councillor Restevsky, do you have a second, or? Second to councillor Khaneeb, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried unanimously, is there anything else that we've missed out on, or is that it? No, wonderful, I'll declare the meeting closed for the whole five minutes to spare. Thank you.